Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Following Governor Inslee's recent statewide mask mandate, facial masks are required to be worn at all times while in council chambers. If any individual is unable to comply with this order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met, then the individual refuses to leave the chambers and the meeting will either be, will either recess or reconvene only virtually to be adjourned. Agenda packet is available at the City of Pasco website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. And then please note that the City Council workshops may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This workshop is also being televised live on Pasco TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous workshop video is available on the city's website as well. And then lastly, the public may submit their comment and their questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Pasco, the Ask Pasco app. And with housekeeping out of the way, can we have a rule call, please?
Council members Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
There he is.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Yep.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. We're all here. Thank you very much, so may we all please rise for the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for that. And next we'll, we have verbal reports from council members. Does any council member would like to report on anything that happened last week or the meetings they attended? Councilmember Alvarado.
Just reporting, we had a great, long meeting with Ben Franklin Chancet. It was going well, but they have resumed fairs. They had discontinued charging folks for riding on the bus because of the pandemic, create a lot of safety issues, so it was a good thing for a while. A lot of people were able to do that, and so they just reinstated that this month. And so, other than that, you know, moving forward with all other business items of the transit.
Perfect. Thank you so much. The councilmember Maloney, oh, I thought you had, or maybe it was, councilmember Milne, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so last week I attended two meetings, and the first one was with Tri-Deck, and it was quite a long meeting, and a lot of it was talked about the Horse Seven Wind Project, which isn't the greatest for the tri-cities. I was kind of surprised at how many towers, up to 248, and they said that 80% of the, well, basically, in Benton County, 86% of the people will see these towers at all times, and of course, they said you'll see them from Pasco as well, considering that none of the energy goes to the state of Washington or locally. I think that's pretty bad, but anyway, that was, quite a lot was going on there. And then with Pasco Parks and Rec, we talked about a lot of different things, Winterfest, more information will be coming up, and then I also talked about the opening of Peanuts Park here in mid-December, and then the Lambs and Cable Bridge Run is open for registration. So, I was kind of thinking about running, if anybody else wanted to run with me on the council, kind of fun, so just throwing that out there.
Doesn't look like I run.
You could. I know you ride a bike, just like I do, so.
I appreciate that, councilmember Milne, thank you very much. And if there's nobody else, I'd just like to report, councilmember Maloney and I attended a Hapo Board of Trustees meeting at the Hapo Center, and I would just like to note, we're going over some of the items and issues that they're having at the Hapo Center and how we could improve, some, and upgrade some of the facility and the things that need to be done, and how we're going to move forward here, going forward with the pandemics being on the, being on the side of having more events and things of that nature. But one of the things I'd like to mention tonight is we are looking for, and trying to recruit somebody who'd be interested in, and maybe volunteering to be on that committee for the board of the Hapo Center, so if anybody's interested, we'd like to, to just, just send out that message, and if you're interested, you can go onto the website and/or call our clerk, and we can help you move forward with the application for positions such as that, as well as many other volunteer positions that we're offering here in the City of Pasco if you want to get involved, and we highly encourage that. That would be very, very good for you to get involved with our community more and make it a better place to live. So with that, we'll move right along, and we'll go to item number five in the items for discussion tonight. The first one would be a presentation for the Tax Increment Financial Proposal Port of Pasco, and I will go ahead and have Director White go ahead and make an introduction, if you would, and.
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Randy Hayden, Executive Director from the Port of Pasco, will provide council a presentation on tax increment financing. It was an economic, it is an economic development tool that many other states use, but it was just passed here in Washington State this past legislative session. So, Mr. Hayden has a very well put together presentation, and I'll turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mr. Hayden, how you doing?
Very well. How are you councilmembers? Thank you so much for the chance to be here tonight. It's an important new piece of legislation that the state passed, tax increment financing, and it's going to enable us to really put in the infrastructure that we need for Dairy Gold and their new large plant here in Pasco. So, I want to get into that, just give you a little bit of background on that bill and the reason why we think it's so important, and it does really affect three property taxing districts, the port, the city, and the county, and so we felt it was important to come before you and really make sure that you understood what we were doing and how this is going to benefit us all as we come tonight. And I guess before getting on with that, I just want to really thank the city for being a great partner in the Dairy Gold project. The council's support and the staff's support on that project has really just been amazing. It's something that I think is very incredible, this level of partnership across the state, so we really should be proud of that. So, thank you again to all of, all of you here at the city and the staff. So, I'm trying not to bore you with this. I've got two slides of bullets, but it's really important because it provides the background of the, of the tax increment financing. As Rick mentioned, it is a new economic development tool that was just passed in the last legislature, and really the idea is to create a certain area within your city and the property taxes that come from that new development in that area would then be used to pay for the infrastructure that's needed to support that area. So, it's, it's property taxes, it's property taxes that you wouldn't see if the new private development didn't occur in that area. So, it's kind of a, a bit of a chicken and egg thing, you need them both to work together. It only affects the increased assessed property valuation in that TIF area, that's all we're talking about. It's not taking existing property taxes from other parts of the, of the city and the county, the port, it's really just from that increased assessed valuation. Importantly, school districts, state property taxes are not included in TIF, it was very specifically excluded from the legislation so that schools would not be impacted, other than the benefit that comes from the new projects. Current property owners do not pay into TIF-funded projects, again, it's excluded to that TIF area, and it's really designed for a specific project and site, so that you, you have to have this, this development that's going to happen. It's not prospective, you're going to put this infrastructure and hope that development comes, you've got to have a project. And importantly, the legislature really wanted to make sure that these projects pass this BUT4 test, meaning if you didn't do this infrastructure, the project would not come. The project is only coming because you're putting this infrastructure in, so it's a very important test. So, how you, how you actually implement a TIF is that a city, county, or port passes a resolution or ordinance designating the increment area, we have to say what those public improvements are and if bonds will be issued. Each agency can have no more than two TIF areas at a time, so we could have two, you could have two, the county could have two, boundaries can't overlap. And to put some limits on what you can declare a TIF area, the existing assessed valuation can't be higher than $200 million, and so they did that so that agencies couldn't take like their whole downtown, declare it a TIF area, and take the property taxes from that area. It has to be less than $200 million. The local government can only receive TIF revenues to pay for the infrastructure that they identify. So, we have to say upfront what infrastructure we're going to put in, how much it's going to cost, and then those property taxes that we collect can only be used to pay for that infrastructure. We can't add new things later on, if, if we're wildly successful and we get more property taxes than we had hoped for, we can't add elements later on. You have to stick with what you said you were going to put in. You can't change the boundary later on, and then the, the full finances have to be paid off within 25 years. So, that's kind of the, the long boring part of the TIF, and I know that you have been involved in some of the legislation forming with your staff, and we really feel like it's an important tool to advance some of these types of projects. So, our, our project for Ryman happens to be the very first TIF project that's going forward in the state, so we're a bit setting the standard for how these projects will be seen at the state level, so we want to make sure we do a really good job and make this a good example so that others can, can use it. So, just a little background of where the Ryman Industrial Center is in blue there, that is 300 acres, our TIF area will not be the whole property, but just a piece of that. We bought that property back in 2019, and shortly following that, Dairy Gold did announce that they were going to move on to the site, and so they're, they're looking at that southern circle of 150 acres, which would be our TIF boundary. They're planning a 550,000 square foot facility, 500 million plus of investment, 200 new jobs, 350 jobs out on the farm, and the dates there, you can see when they're going to start. So, just looking at numbers, excuse me. You can see the cost there. About $20 million of infrastructure, sewer water, et cetera. How much will be needed to pay for that, and the increment financing would be about $8 million of the, the total funding that we need. So, we're looking at a 20-year bond that would be about $550,000 per year to pay for that $8 million. Any questions on that so far, or anything I said?
So, just to be clear, and, and I think I want to state this more so for the public, this is a Port of Pasco proposed TIF. It's, it's, you're not necessarily really requesting anything from the city on our behalf, except for maybe just, this is more of an advisory presentation, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
The legislation was written so that each agency could do these TIFs without any formal approval, but I think we've always worked very well together. We want to make sure, especially since it's our property taxes collectively, that we're all well informed.
No, I, I appreciate that. I just, like I said, I just want to kind of really restate that succinctly and just clarify.
Right.
So, I appreciate that, Randy.
Yeah, you bet. So, as you can see, the TIF financing of $8 million, I mean, that's a piece of what we need to pay for the infrastructure, but there are lots of other funds that are going into this as well. So, the 552,000 dollar number, if you could just kind of put a bookmark on that number, because it'll come up in the, in the next slides that we get to here. I think a really good question, and this slide got a little wonky on us here, I apologize for that, but a good question that could come up is why is not the industry, in this case Dairy Gold, paying for this infrastructure? They are paying for a lot, and that's the purpose for this slide. Part of that 550 million dollar investment that we showed, they're paying for a lot of infrastructure themselves, so whenever you're trying to attract a big company, new economic development, they're asking for you to do some, and then they will do some. So, if you totaled all these things on the screen that they're going to have to put in to get wastewater up to the process water reuse facility, connect to domestic water, put in their own pretreatment facility for their sanitary sewer, all these numbers together is about $35 million that they will be putting into kind of infrastructure to support their project. So, they are really paying a lot as well. All right, so just getting into the numbers here, if you look at what the assessed valuation is going to be, then you start calculating how much property taxes you're actually going to collect. Now, I said that Dairy Gold has estimated their investment at about $500 million plus. When we're calculating how much we expect to receive, we want to be conservative, and so we have run our financial scenarios based on two numbers for assessed valuation, a $200 million assessed valuation and a $400 million assessed valuation. So, less than the 500 million that they are saying, but we don't really know how that's going to translate to actual assessed valuation that the county assessor will, will put on the books. So, we want to be very conservative and not spend more money than we expect to take in. So, if you look at the $200 million assessed valuation and look at the total taxes, that's how you get that $613,000 per year is what would be collected in property taxes, and if their assessed valuation is 400 million, you would be looking at about $1,200,000 in property tax collections. So, how's that break down if we bond that out? So, I've got two, just two more slides here to go through, and one will look at the tax allocation of 200 million increment value and then 400 million. We are basing everything that we're, we're putting together on that $200 million, again, just to be very conservative. So, if you look at that, you look at 2021 tax levy rates, again, you can see for the, the port, Franklin County, City Pasco, Veterans Relief Mental Health, then you see the total taxes to be collected, and in the TIF project bond amount, how much of those taxes we would need to pay off our bond for the infrastructure, and then how much would be returned to the agency. So, anything collected over what we said we need goes back to each agency, and I should have pointed out, everything that, that property is currently assessed at also continues going to the agency's normal property tax collections. So, in this scenario of a $200 million increment, we will need $552,000 to pay off our bonds, and that would leave $61,000 to come back to the agency's normal property taxes. A couple big caveats on this slide is that there, there will be other taxes that, that come into the city, the state, the schools as a result of this project, not just property taxes. So, you'll have sales taxes, payroll taxes, utility taxes, and of course, the school bond levies will be collected as usual. A little piece of that will also go to the county assessor and treasurer for their services that will support the TIF project. I wanted to go back, actually. Where was that slide? Oh, this is an older one. I think another important thing to point out, along with the infrastructure that we are putting in as the port and that Dairy Gold is putting in, the city is putting in a huge investment. I think you're going to hear from Richa later today when you look at your capital budget, all the, the good things that the city's doing with water, new water reservoir, upgrades to their water reuse facility and municipal sanitary sewer, city's putting a huge investment in this, which is not reflected in this TIF project. So, again, just thanks for all of that investment. Okay, final slide. What if the tax allocations do come in closer to the, the higher number that Dairy Gold is projecting of, let's say, $400 million? Then in that case, looking at the bottom line again, we will still need 552,000 for our, our bonds, and then you'd get about 675,000 being returned to the agencies' normal tax collections. So, that's how the process works, that's what we're looking at to fund the infrastructure for, for Ryman, and happy to answer any questions that you might have. Or get out of your way for your other items on the agenda.
No, it's a wonderful presentation, is, explained it very well. I think it's wonderful. I think it's a, it's a good product, and we should take advantage of it, and I think I'm all for it. Councilmember Serrano?
Yep. Sorry, I'm going to pepper you with a couple. So, just to help everyone understand, you know, when, when we, when I hear bond, I think of a revenue bond, something that's going to increase costs, you know, taxes that people are paying either at, you know, if it's a gas tax at the pump or the retail, you know, checkout. Can, can you walk us through this? My, you know, it looks like what it is, is an actual reallocation of taxes, you know, tried to study up on it quickly, didn't put a whole lot into it, but I think what we need to make clear to the folks is if they're going to see an increase to debt services bond, what that would be on an annualized basis of point X percent, or, or that this is in fact the real reallocation of existing taxes, and we're not going to see an increase in taxes.
Yeah. Quite clearly, this will be no impact to existing taxes, so the only thing that will pay for these, this bond that you've mentioned is the new taxes, property taxes that Dairy Gold brings in by their investment on the site. So, if Dairy Gold doesn't come, we don't build the infrastructure, nothing happens. If they do come, we build the infrastructure, we take their new property taxes that they are bringing to the community to pay for the infrastructure. So, yes, no impact to existing property taxes. And I should add, if anything, it'll probably decrease the overall tax burden because a lot of the costs that we all pay for schools, this is a good example, on bonds and levies, we'll now have another large industrial customer helping to pay off those bonds, which will take the burden off the rest of us.
Excellent. I really appreciate that. I think that's helpful, I mean, especially as we're looking at like the water park, I mean, all these other things are where we need to spend more money that we don't have. Here, we're, you know, allocating funds that are theoretically going to come or not, allocating funds that don't come, right? And so, again, I appreciate that.
And if I could add one thing, and if we don't get the tax revenue that we're projecting, it's the port that's on the hook to pay those, not the city, not the county, so we've got funds that we have in, in our books kind of set aside that if we don't get the expected funds from Dairy Gold that we can still pay for.
Thank you. Well, thank you for that presentation, and looking forward to, to just move forward.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution from Basin Disposal Inc., 2022 proposed rate increase. Mr. Wardley, would you like to start us off with that one tonight?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As we do each year at about this time, we come before council with a proposed increase in garbage collection and disposal rates. We've done this over the last several years. We received notification from Basin Disposal about this year's increase, and the information is in your packet. The total impact related to that information is about an 89 cent per month increase in a 96 gallon container, but in, in the past, council has decided to have this information reviewed by a subcommittee of the council, and so the staff is recommending that council pull that subcommittee together and possibly review this information and then bring it back to council for final approval.
Wonderful. I, I think that's a good idea. Who were those that were on that committee last year?
Watkins and myself.
Who's that?
Watkins and myself.
Okay, okay. Would, would the council like to volunteer to be on this committee? Do we need, do we need two or three?
It's up to the council, I believe.
Okay, well, I'm definitely one of them that, that can participate in that. Any other council member would like to join me and review on this?
I'm back here.
Okay, so if we, if we could do it that way, you can kind of fill us in on last year, so you can go ahead and jot down that myself, Mayor Protem Barajas, and Councilmember Alvarado will be on that committee.
Okay. Will do.
And so, yeah, we can review that and see if we can move it forward.
That sounds great, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we'll go to, well, first, I guess, there's no, there's no other questions or comments from any other councilmembers? All right, so next, we'll move right on to our capital improvement plan. Director Richa, would you like to get us going with that?
Mayor, good evening, Mayor and council. If I could jump in and just make a few introductory comments about the CIP plan. So, the 2021, 2027 CIP plan is actually a, it's a six-year plan, seven looking back to 2021. We've included 2021, so it's a, it's a little bit longer, but I think it gives you a little bit more of a complete look. It identifies planned capital projects and land acquisitions that we know about for the city at this time. The plan provides spreadsheets and individual project sheets that indicate the schedule and the finance package of each project, as well as by fund. And so, there's a lot of information, materials in your packet that council can, and the public can avail themselves to. The CIP, and I, I think we're in a really great position in where we're at on a lot of our comprehensive planning efforts. So, you just completed your comprehensive land use plan analysis last year. Some of our other utility plans have been updated recently, and so they're all very much integrated with one another, which those are a big, a big part of where our project lists have came and how they've developed in, in this update. Also, projects have been identified through community input and the council visioning process, the goal setting from two years ago, a lot of those projects are moving forward. And then certainly, city staff that's engaged in the maintenance of public infrastructure have identified a lot of the projects here as well and have been able to influence the plan. As a general rule, the goals of CI planning, CIP planning are actually pretty similar to council adopted goals. If you look at your adopted goals on the back wall back there, enhancing public health and safety, enhancing quality of life, providing reliable infrastructure, which kind of falls under financial sustainability, provide for financial stability through an increased efficiency, replacing infrastructure at the end of useful life, increase capacity for, for growth and, and for current needs, promotion of economic growth, and transparency to the public and investors about the city's plans for the future. So, on, on the plan itself, it's not a budget necessarily, although we try to, try to, at least in the first few years, capture as closely as we can with those projects, or at least from an order of magnitude, the cost of those projects, but it's a plan, and an adopting plan, the plan, the council's basically signaling its intent to move forward with the implementation of the projects and the plan, based on the information you have at that time. It is, you know, this council now has, most of you have at least one term worth of experience, some more, and you've seen how plans kind of morph during that period of time. We get additional information, plans might be combined, or they might be separated, you know, what a big project might be broken up into different phases or different components, and you've seen some of that over the years. And so, you'll, you'll see projects kind of develop and take on their own life as they get closer and closer to, to implementation. A project being included in the plan, though, is not a guarantee, it's not, it's not an adopted budget necessarily, so it's not, it's not a guarantee it's going to be built as described in, in this iteration. As I've said, it could change over subsequent iterations. Even the estimates on the plans can swing significantly over time, and we've all seen that. You know, a lot of times that, that plan is in there, the, the first time a project's in the plan is, it's basically a plug number, may not have enough information to really put a, a good number on it, and then we go through something like a water comp plan update, or land use, or transportation plan update, and you'll see some planning level estimates at that point in time. Those are a little bit closer, but those are not an engineered estimate. We do feasibility analysis, probably about the next step along that line, and then design phase and so forth. And at each of those phases, you're going to get a little bit tighter number, but there's no number that really comes close to what the bid number is going to be. I wish we could say we could accurately predict, but particularly right now, as, as council has seen over the last year or two, with COVID and some of the impacts on labor and supplies and things like that, it's, it's really tough to look three, four, seven years out in the future and say what a project's going to cost. This particular plan totals over 150 projects, amounting to a little bit over half a billion dollars. So, we're talking about pretty significant investments on the part of the city, and this evening, we're just going to walk through this plan, some of the metrics, touch on a brief description of those completed in, in the last year, you'll, you'll see a lot of them, and some of the new projects, and as I mentioned before, detailed information is provided in your packets on all the projects, but we're just going to kind of hit the highlights tonight, or we'd be here till tomorrow morning with 157 projects. So, with that, I'm going to ask Director Sigdal to get us started on the financial detail.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, and evening, council. As Mr. Zabel mentioned in quite a good detail, that this is a plan, as it says in its name itself. However, we do really try to be as close to the adopted budget or proposed budget as possible for the first couple of years, and some of the components that you will also see in the plan are our partnerships with our partners as well. So, if the city is leading the project, you might see the full cost of the project. A good example is the animal control shelter, where we are partnering with our neighboring communities, but the City of Pasco is leading that effort, and hence, we will be including their contributions to that project as well, while we're including that in our capital improvement plan. With that, you will see With that, you will see some wall of numbers, and I apologize for that, but we did want to provide this so that it's included in the packet, so the council and the viewers at home can go and look at the numbers in more details. We also want to introduce, before we start on the actual projects themselves, the fact that staff is working on a little bit better presentation of our capital improvement plan, so it is more intuitive than usually the three, four-hundred-page project sheets that you usually get. And this, we've procured ClearGov, which is a government transparency tool. And in future, we're planning for a capital improvement website like this. In fact, it is ready, but there's few things that we, as staff, would like to work on and fine-tune. But this is what it essentially looks like, and viewers can go in and look at what buildings and facilities or water sewer projects there are, or roadways. And it can give you really good details on the project itself. Similarly, there's also a component of, component within our budget that we're also planning to make it more electronic rather than the PDF format, and these projects will show up in a much better format than currently existing.
Just one quick question. Will we make this available, like via social media?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I'm thinking of capitalizing on all these efforts to make these things more accessible to the public, you know, allowing them, in a form of outreach, if you want, well, allowing them to just utilize these tools that you're spending a lot of time and money creating.
Yeah.
Let's capitalize on that and make them as accessible as possible. Because, I mean, it's a struggle to read through them, quite frankly, as a council member, but I think if, you know, if I live in an area and I can click on it from Facebook, why the heck not?
Yes.
I think, I thank you for your foresight there, or whoever we give credit to, but it's going to you.
Yes, absolutely. It's been a lot of effort from all departments at the city, because we all have projects, and so, it is finance department's honor to present it, but definitely effort on all sides, and especially Public Works and ACS Department, who would have to update all of the information, get us all of the pertinent information as well. So, we will keep working on that. There's just a few little tweaks that we would like to do before we roll it out to the public. However, we wanted to show this to you, just so that you know, you know where you can go to get the project details at this time, and we will work on getting all of those bugs sorted out, and we will start making this more publicly available on our social media and our website as well. With that, you're looking at about five-hundred-and-six million dollars in total, a little bit more than half a billion dollars over seven years. Usually, we do our capital improvement plan for six years, but given that we are a biennial budget city, we wanted to give you that extra year of twenty-twenty-one. We did a little, just in an effort to do an apples-to-apples comparison, if you were to look at your last year's capital improvement plan, which was a six-year plan, it was two-hundred-and-sixty-eight million, and if we excluded twenty-twenty-one, you're looking at four-hundred-and-twenty-eight million. And that is an increase of almost sixty percent, which makes sense. We are doing a lot of things in all sides of the city, as you could see in that map. Your red map drops, or whatever we call them, they're basically covering the whole city. And that is very much reflective on that growth in your capital improvement plan as well. You're looking at some pretty big projects like the East and West UGA LID, which wouldn't be all of city's contribution. As council is aware, LIDs are where we partner with the property owners to do improvements. But you're also looking at external partnership projects that the city has necessarily not included in our capital improvement plans in the past, but they're really good pieces of information for the community to see what's going to come in their neighborhoods in near future. We've also added some in the past where there might have been just land purchases, like for our fire station eighty-six and eighty-seven. We have now added construction costs for those for future years as well. And again, these are plans. You will see a lot of unsecured funding for those efforts, but it's a roadmap for us and in terms of for us to be thinking about how we want to fund them, and what are the impacts of building those infrastructure as well overall. More information, but if you're interested, you could look into exactly where, at this time, the plan is for the funding to come in. And you will see some unsecured funding in here, like unsecured bond, unsecured state loans, things like that. I believe fifty-six percent of the CIP at this point is secured, which is a really good number for us. In the past, the unsecured portion has been a lot higher. Overall, hundred-and-fifty-seven projects, so quite a bit, five-hundred-and-six million dollars over seven years in investment, and hundred-and-eighty-eight million for twenty-one and twenty-two biennium. And fifty-three percent, I said fifty-six, my apologies, fifty-three percent of the funds are secured so far, which is really good, especially when you're looking at seven years in future. But then, also, some of the things like LIDs, if they do not get passed, those projects do not happen. So, but if they do get passed, that's thirty-five million dollars right there. That becomes instantly secured. We have also tried to go and try to categorize our projects in what is more of a business standard while we're utilizing ClearGov. And buildings and facilities, in the past, you might not have seen this category, but it's essentially what are we building outside of our utilities, especially if it's a facility and not a park. So, that is what buildings and facilities would be. You're looking at about fifty-two million dollars in the next, in the seven years for the CIP, and eighteen million dollars for this biennium. The largest project is the Public Works Operations Center, which you have seen in the past, maybe not with a number. I think we've kind of let council know that that is a project that is needed, but not necessarily put a number to that project at that time. Water utility, we're going to be talking about water and sewer rates a little bit later here, and these are all of the projects that are driving the need to have that conversation, especially the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant Improvement. You're looking at twenty-five million. We just talked about the reservoir and the need for that for the existing residents, as well as the new ones that will be coming in. Sewer utility, you're, more than half of your allocation of a hundred-and-fourteen million dollars here is really to improve our waste treatment, wastewater treatment plant. So, some of these projects are really heavy in investment and, and some of those things where it might be fifty years, I'm looking at Mr. Worley here, to see exactly what the lifetime of a treatment plant is. But we do have a treatment plant that is coming up for replacement, essentially. And so, that is why you're seeing this level of high investment that is needed. And, and of course, in that time, we also like to upgrade things with new technology so that we're not looking at replacing the old technology with old technology and being in a worse situation, maybe a decade down the line. Processed water reuse facility, the Dairy Gold conversation is a really good conversation, a big customer who is going to be possibly connected to the facility, and with that comes investments that are needed, not just for Dairy Gold, but also for our existing customers as well. Again, the same situation of a facility that is, has reached the end of its life, and hence, new investments needed to replace and keep going. Irrigation and stormwater, pretty simple utilities and projects. And parks and recreation, we are going to be going through all of the, not all of these projects, but some of the highlighted projects here, and the departments will actually get to talk about some of these projects. Roadways, you will see a lot of new projects in this arena, and again, for all of the growth and all of the new industry that is coming in as well. As I mentioned earlier, external partnerships or projects that were not necessarily included in the past, but we have seen how important some of these projects are, just for our residents to be aware of, and for council to be aware of as well. So, we've included this. There is a little bit of investment from the city, not those full amounts, and when you go into project details, you can see what the project, what the city's investment to these projects is expected to be at this time. And of course, as Mr. Zabel mentioned, those are subject to change, but at this time, we have the numbers as we best know. With that, we're going to go into some of the categories, and with public safety, I will just cover that myself. We are looking at some pretty big new projects, like I mentioned, the construction of the fire station eighty-six and eighty-seven. In the past, council has seen those projects in the context of land purchase. But at this time, we've also added construction cost, as well as some of the equipment cost to have those facilities going up as well. For example, fire stations are, you will need some apparatus as soon as you build your fire stations and you staff them. So, we've included those costs as well, as well as the police headquarters and training campus expansion. That is something that is being worked on as we speak, and a land purchase for the training center. We've also completed some pretty substantial projects. Station eighty-three and eighty-four replacements are done and almost done. I believe station eighty-four is already operational, so as an accountant, it is done. But there's still few things that are still needing to be completed there. There's some operational projects, like the training center restroom and station eighty-one and eighty-two remodels, that are, there are still operational project that were completed as well. Fire station eighty-six and eighty-seven, we do have a budgeted land purchase for twenty-twenty-two, and we also have a secured funding for station eighty-seven land purchase. However, as I mentioned, the remainder of the funding is unsecured, and we will have to have that conversation as we get closer to those projects. And with that, I will invite my peer, Mr. Ratkai, to speak about parks and recreation projects.
Thank you, Ms. Sigdel, and yeah, just a couple of highlights for parks and recreation. We'll be beginning our installation of the replacement of the rundown tennis courts at Sylvester Park with mini soccer court, multi-use courts for the community. That'll be a great project, and it was a great collaborative effort here at the city with grant funding for both the parks and recreation, as well as Pasco Police Department, looking to do some outreach and community building as well. So, we appreciate their partnership. Pickleball has taken off, so future plans to find a pickleball complex, maybe with some lights, to keep that growing in the community. And then, as part of the Dust Devils remaining in town as our minor league baseball team, there are some player-oriented renovations that Major League Baseball would like to see at Geesa Stadium. Completed projects, some of you are out at Chapel Hill Park. We did a great Arbor Day event. That park is now wrapping up to be open, of course, impacted, much like the Peanuts Park restoration by supply chain shortages throughout the year. And Peanuts Park is slated to be complete in mid-December as well, so a lot of great progress in those areas, and two very large parks projects that will be good to have for the community. Getting into a little bit more specifics, as we work through our overall citywide parks, recreation, and open space master plan, we'll be looking at the placement of a large community park in northwest Pasco, and we have funding already to secure the land purchase, so we're kind of looking around, shopping for some new land. But the guidance of the master plan itself is really going to guide our long-term strategy for that provision of a community park in the northwest quadrant of Pasco. We were able to secure additional grant funding to begin construction. We'll be going out for bid really soon for the Highland Park Bathroom Concession and Office and Storage. Highland Park is east of Oregon Avenue and is primarily used by Pasco youth football. This was a project where we got a grant from the RCO office. Once we got into design, we looked at the estimated cost needing to be increased. We were able to secure additional grant funding to offset that cost, so we'll be looking to construct this much-needed facility in east Pasco shortly, over the next couple of months. And then, going a little bit deeper into the Geesa Stadium improvements, our first proposal is the Phase One of the Player-Oriented Improvements. This would be the Visiting Clubhouse Facility. We've identified this project because it meets with the remaining bond revenue balance that we have, so therefore, we aren't raising any additional funding for this. It meets the player-oriented upgrades that Major League Baseball requires of the minor league baseball system, and we can work in the visitor clubhouse during the baseball season and allow the teams to come in as they've normally utilized the stadium while we're doing those construction improvements. So, with that, it's some improvements to offices. We do have a commissary and dining area outlined in orange, and expansion of a twelve-hundred-square-foot locker room facility for the visiting ball clubs to come in and use. As the project progresses, we'll be looking at some improvements to the Dust Devil Clubhouse as well, but that'll come in the future. And then, finally, the Martin Luther King Center renovation and expansion. We, the city was able to obtain one million dollars in funding from the State Department of Commerce, utilizing a request for additional ARPA funding to bring the project up to six million. This will provide not only needed and necessary interior renovations, aesthetic renovations, but also improvements to youth safety and ADA accessibility throughout the building, with expansion room in there for, as we'll talk about a little bit later in the evening, cooperation on a small facility with Mid-Columbia Libraries, incorporating the Kurtzman Park Mini Station for Pasco Police Department with the facility for community building, and expanded community center and meeting space for the immediate community, well, the community at large, but definitely needed in that side of town. And with that, I'll turn it over to my counterpart, Mr. Worley, to discuss transportation.
Hey, Mr. Ratkai, just one quick question on those, on the Highland Park, that upper level, you mentioned those as office buildings. Is that more of, and maybe I misheard, is that office buildings, or is that more of like community center space?
It's more of just general offices for Pasco youth football and storage of equipment for the, for game day and practices, things like that.
Oh, okay, okay. I was just trying to determine whether or not that's some type of place where we could hold community meetings. I know we've talked about some of the places in east Pasco needing to be renovated to allow for that type of facility, and I was curious if that would offer that, and it sounds like that's not the case.
No, I think the intention is community, or meetings for Pasco youth football and their volunteers and coordinators.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of council?
Well, I would just add that this facility is much needed. It's been years in the waiting, and I look at, and it's just exciting to see all these activities that are going on in our, in our, in our plan that we have, as long as we can get the funding, but no, that's all I had. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Steve?
Thank you, Director Ratkai. There's going to be a lot of information on this one, but we're going to try to slim it down to just some of the highlights, and so, if council has any additional questions, please feel free to let me know. There's a lot of transportation projects that you'll see on the CIP list this year. A lot of it is related to a lot of analysis this past year on our Transportation System Master Plan and on the new comprehensive plan that's been done, and all the traffic that's related to that, and the needs within our city on other streets as well. In this particular list of projects that you'll see, a lot of them are on the Broadmoor area, based on some of the improvements that are going to be needed there, with the changes that are coming our way, like number one and number two, the Broadmoor Boulevard projects. But there's also some pavement preservation projects that you'll see on here, that we recently got some funding for, the Oregon Avenue and Court Street overlays. We recently got some funding for those, which is going to really help our street preservation program. So, we'll move on to the next slide. So we'll move on to the next slide. The other projects that we got completed this year, the first three that you see listed there are projects that were identified to help address the congestion on Road sixty-eight. So those all got completed this year. And we did get one street preservation project completed and that was the Court Street Overlay. So we're really glad to be able to get that done. Next slide, please. We also had some bike pedestrian access projects that were identified last year and moving forward this year. You'll see the Burns Road Bicycle Pathway, all, all three phases. We're going to bid that out here shortly. And because of the comments that we've received from the public, we're going to do Phases One and Two and we're going to do additive bids for Phases Three and for the North Road ninety-three power line pathway as well. See if we can get really good bids within our budget and we'll see if we can award as many of those as we possibly can. The rest of them are ones that we are continuing to pursue, especially one of them, which is the Pedestrian Bicycle Access Road One Hundred Interchange. That's another project that was identified earlier. And we, as part of the interchange improvements that are needed on the Broadmoor, we have to do what's called an active transportation analysis of that interchange, which includes pedestrian and bicycle access. So that will be included as well.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Just a quick question, just for clarification for me. On the previous slide, you had Broadmoor Boulevard, Burns Road Intersection Improvement. That, that's something totally separate from improvements that need to be made for like the sidewalks for where the schools are and stuff. Is that correct?
Which one was that again?
Item number two, where it says Broadmoor Boulevard, Burns Road Intersection Improvements.
Yeah, that's the, at the north end there. The Burns Road Pathway Project goes from Broadmoor Boulevard to Road ninety for Phase One.
So that does involve those improvements for the walkways to the schools?
The pathway project will, that was listed on the later slide. The intersection project will probably be dealt with as a separate project in and of itself. The pathway project will get done and bid out this year with construction planned for next year. And the intersection project probably will be designed next year with construction in late two thousand and twenty-two or early two thousand and twenty-three. I want to make sure I answered your question.
Yeah, so it does involve, it does involve that, the walkways and the, and the issues that we're having over those new schools over in that area.
Yes, the pathway project will do that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions of Congress from council?
We're going to go over a few more. We've got a lot more utilities to go through and transportation projects. I think one of the biggest projects we got under construction this way was the Lewis Street Overpass. This was one that's been, obviously council's been awaiting for a long time. Wanted to point out that we have our fisheye camera on, online now and that is on the city's website. So that is constantly on, so you can watch the construction of the overpass as it occurs. And just so you know, the two walls that you see there, the one on the left is actually the abutment for the bridge over the railroad tracks. And the other one on the right is the abutment for the small bridge that's going over First Avenue. So in between there will be a very large fill with some very large walls holding the fill up. So keep an eye on that. The next one is the Sylvester Street Safety Improvements. This is one which will turn Sylvester Street into a much safer complete streets project into a three-lane design with curb gutter sidewalks and bike lanes. We were able to get some state and federal grants for that, which is very, very fortunate for the city. We are currently in the process of consultant selection for the design of this project and the interviews are tomorrow. So, next project, please. This is the Road sixty-eight and Court Street Intersection Improvement Proposal. This is an example of one of two roundabout options that we're looking at. Right now, we are evaluating what the potential right-of-way impacts and operational evaluation for this intersection improvement would look like. So this also is federally funded and we are moving forward with the design on this one. Next one, and as I mentioned previously, the Oregon Avenue Overlay Project. This was on Pasco's list for state and federal funding under direct appropriations. And we were just very fortunate to be able to apply for what's called a National Highway System Grant through WashDOT. And we were successful in getting that and Court Street under that program. So we've got almost five million dollars worth of projects to help our street preservation program. So we're very happy about that. That's it for transportation. Any questions? Great. Next is our Process Water Reuse Facility. And this one should go quick. As council is aware, we've been to council several times on many different contracts recently. So we've got our pretreatment Phase One and Two projects started. That's going to get potable water, electricity to the site and get new storage. We're working on Phase Three right now. There's also other improvements related to the existing fields and the intake screening and those kinds of things in the CIP plan. Next project, this year we were able to complete the Columbia East Force Main Project. And as of today, I believe we started getting the pump station going and pushing grimway water through the Force Main up to the reuse facility. And that was the goal of this project is to get grim waste flows out of the wastewater treatment, or the, yeah, the municipal wastewater treatment plant. So it'll take a while to get it fully done, but we are pushing that operation and start up right now. So very, very successful project. Moving on, this is just a quick picture showing the location of where the Phase One project is going to be going. It's up Capitol Avenue, over to Foster Wells Road, and then up to the reuse facility for both water and electrical. And the next slide basically shows one of our storage ponds and we are looking to build as part of Phase Two hundreds more million gallons of storage because our processors want to increase and we've got new processors coming onboard. So we're excited about that. And then our Phase Three project is still moving forward. We did get agreement from our processors to help pay for a thirty percent design on a new pretreatment system at the reuse facility. And so we're looking at an anaerobic digestion system that is really going to help improve the treatment of the wastewater from the processors. And we are excited about moving this project forward. And I'll be bringing more information to council about this as soon as we get just a little bit more information. This is a really exciting project that I think you're going to like. Next category, any projects on, any questions on reuse facility? All right, moving on, sewer. Lots of sewer projects going on. A lot of the projects that you will see listed in this CIP is based on an analysis we recently did on the city's system in the areas where growth is going to occur. And so a lot was identified to be able to accommodate that growth. The completed projects that we've done are the lift stations that you see there and the Northwest Area Sewer LID. The lift station improvements are, were needed to accommodate all the existing flows for the existing customers that are there now. We just needed to add some redundancy and some resiliency to our pump station systems to ensure that they continue to operate effectively. And then the Northwest Sewer LID should be wrapping up here shortly. Next one, I think you heard it mentioned about the UGA expansion area and the LID that is proposed for that area. This is exciting for us because we've got, we are working with a group of landowners who are interested in moving and working with us and move this forward quickly. We actually have some pre-formation agreements with them signed in order to start the LID process on these. So we are selecting the consultant now for this project, but this will allow the UGA area to expand as we get the backbone sewer systems constructed and in place through the LID. Next project, and here's another one of those fisheye cameras we have installed out at the wastewater treatment plant. This is the Phase One Project. What you'll see there is the construction of the Aeration Basin Expansion. The two ones in the middle on the bottom photo are the existing, the two outside ones are the new ones. We're going to be upgrading the technology in the existing ones to make the processing more efficient for the existing wastewater flow. And this one was a great kudo to our staff for the twenty-five-million-dollar low-interest loan that they were able to receive from the Department of Ecology. Any questions on wastewater? Okay, stormwater irrigation. This is a pretty small category, but we'll go through these really quick. We do have some new projects on the CIP, the North Commercial Avenue Infiltration Pond retrofit. That will be done in next year. And then a new system that we are looking at is a new source for our irrigation system. And in this particular case, since our growth is coming in from the north, we are actually looking at partnering with the USBR and the South Columbia Basin Irrigation District to potentially bring water in from their irrigation canal and bring it into our irrigation system. We think this might be a better solution than pumping with bigger pumps and more pipes up from the river to serve the Northwest area of the city. The other project that is on the list that you'll see is the Aquifer Storage and Recovery. And this is a project we're working on with Ecology where we will likely drill a very, very deep hole in the ground, pump water into the ground into a layer of soil about a thousand feet below the surface, store the water in that layer during the winter. And then in the summer, when the river flows are lower, we will withdraw the water out of this well and use it rather than use river water. So the idea is to put it in, store it, use it when we need it. And so this will enhance both our potable water system and our irrigation system as well. And Ecology has money to help pay for this project. And the completed projects that we've done, we've just done a lot of stormwater contributions to transportation projects such as the Wrigley Drive Extension, which I think most people are familiar with now. Any questions on, oh wait, I've got one more. I apologize. This is the example of the station that we are, the pump station that we would be looking at to get water from the Skibid Irrigation Canal and pump it into our irrigation system. So to help address growth in the city. So any questions on stormwater irrigation? I know this is just riveting stuff. The final one will be water. And on the water, I, most, this council has recognized a lot of these projects, the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. That project is actually out to bid as of today, the Phase One Project. So this is the one that will increase, the first phase of the project that will increase the capacity of the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant from six million gallons per day to twelve million gallons per day. We are starting Phase Two Design and then there will be a Phase Three. And then in the CIP, you will also see Phase Four, which will bring the plant up to eighteen million gallons per day. Then there's also the Reservoir Tank Zone Two to help our industrial area. And then we also have the Northeast Industrial Waterline Extension and that is a, a project that will help support the Ryman Industrial Center. And we are working in partnership with the Port of Pasco on that project. Next slide, the completed projects. We did, we were able to complete one waterline upgrade this year. It was in the alley east of Wee Hee. Love that word, road name. And we held off on some of the other replacement needs that we had this year because of some of the revenue uncertainties we had related to COVID. So you'll see some more of these replacement projects. This one has been a constant maintenance problem for staff, so we went ahead and replaced it this year. And there'll be more of those throughout the system in the next seven years. The next project is the reservoir, or Zone Three Reservoir Storage. I think we recently came to council with that. This is the design-build project that we are just now starting. We also got a low-interest loan for this one. And this is the project that we are working to get done as soon as possible to help support a new industrial processor with a name that starts with D. And then, not quite lastly, but almost, we have the ones that I mentioned about the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. This is the inside of the plant with the first bank of microfilters. There are two spots for future expansion. The one going out to bid today is the next rack that goes in there. And then the Phase Four will be the third rack that'll take us up to eighteen million gallons. Next, and then this is the final slide for the water system. And this is pictures of the planned improvements for Butterfield to increase the technology for the wastewater treatment plant. We use a technology now that is a little bit older, tried and true, but as we will announce a little bit later tonight, has been very, very successful. But we are looking at newer technologies to increase the capacity at this plant. This plant is old. It was the original and it is needing to be replaced. So with that, any questions on the water side? And then finally, we just wanted to point out for council and the public that staff has been very successful in the last year or two with actually going out and looking for opportunities to get funding for these large capital projects in Public Works. And so this table here shows all of the grant or loan applications that the staff has been successful on. And as you can see at the bottom, almost sixty-four million dollars has been received in either grants or low-interest loans over the last year, year and a half just for the major infrastructure improvements that are proposed for Pasco. There are a couple, a few there that are in white that you'll notice that we are waiting results on to see if those ones that we've applied for actually come through. But Public Works staff is committed to continuing to pursue all available funding opportunities, whether it be grants or loans for all of our projects. We just don't want to miss an opportunity at all to help keep our rates down for our customers. So with that, I think I turned it over to City Manager Zabel at this point.
Thanks, Steve. So just to, council, just a couple more things. I'd, I'd mentioned some of the source documents for the, for the projects. And you can see on this last page, some assessments and evaluations that have done, been done specifically. Completed list on the, on the left side that have generated some of these projects. And on the right side, some of the ongoing evaluations as well. Comprehensive Transportation Master Plan, we've been obviously talking about that for the better part of a year. Butterfield, you heard that during the budget process last year. That facility plan is complete. That's generated a list of projects. Steve talked about the South Columbia Irrigation District Evaluation. And then right now, we have underway, and council's well aware of this, I know, but Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Police Strategic Plan and Fire Department Master Plan update. And those will generate projects as we go forward too. So it's kind of an always, always an updating kind of thing. So some of those plans obviously aren't going to be complete in the next week or two. And so we'll see those probably some new projects from those efforts added next year. And from the look of it, we'll have a lot of projects coming off as completed next year too, and we do our updates, so. I did want to note, I did want to note, one other item is, and I, I think you've kind of caught a theme throughout this. And it, it does kind of bring me back to when I first got here and was involved with the first CIP I was involved with, I think in two thousand and fifteen. The two thousand and fourteen was already complete when I, when I arrived, but that two thousand and fifteen plan and the two thousand and sixteen and seventeen plans were really focused on fixing a lot of worn-out stuff that we're playing, paying bonds on now. There's still a lot of, still a lot of antiquated or undersized facilities that we're in the process of updating and changing. We have, for instance, at the wastewater treatment plant, an outfall that was put in probably in the late nineteen-fifties. It's going to be underwater work. It's not going to be cheap. And that's something that needs to be done, whether we have growth or don't have growth. And so there's, I guess my, my point is, is that, you know, there, there's always a concern about making sure that our existing ratepayers aren't being burdened for new growth. And I, I think as council members and as, as senior staff too, that's something we worry about and we really try to make sure that there's a balance there. So there's a lot of things that are being replaced. You, you saw three lift stations that are worn out from fifty years' worth of use that we completed this year that are part of the bond package that all the new ratepayers that have come on in the last few years, they have nothing to do with the lift stations they're paying for. So we, we try to look at that kind of a balance as we go forward. Make sure growth is paying for its share, the LID, Northwest LID and that new urban growth area. All that sewer expansion out there is going to be paid through an assessment on those specific properties that are going to benefit from those lines. It's a lot of money, but it's going to be paid for from the properties in the area that are going to be served with those sewer lines. So happy to answer any questions about those type of things as we go forward if council wants to put some thought into that. To me, that's a really important aspect of not only rates, but our CIP plan and our priorities we put in our CIP plan, so. and our priorities we put in our CIP plan, so.
Well, thank you, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel and staff for that report. Um, what, what I would just like to say is, you know, it's, it's amazing how much time goes into this and how many activities uh, uh, and how many actions are going to take place. So we got our plan, and then we have our goals that you guys, that the council uh, every two years goes and puts in place. It, it's very critical that those work together because a goal without a plan is just a wish. And that's why we do what we do here on the council, um, and, and the staff and, and how they prepare everything. There's so many exciting things going on and, and, and I'm sure that as each one of those uh, actions are taking place, you know, there's going to be some more input. I have some more questions, and I'll just talk offline with you, Mr. Worley, about the water, the wastewater treatment plant. But um, it, it's just exciting to see all these um, all these uh, things are going to happen and uh, and looking forward to seeing how we, they can come to fruition, so very exciting plan. Anybody else have any comments?
I really appreciate it, seeing uh, a interactive uh, map. I know uh, some cities do a good job with that. Um, and I know there's a capability question, but um, perhaps just a suggestion. Uh, a lot of times when folks are looking at these maps, they're like, oh, when is this happening? And there's no real sense of like, oh, that, that's way down, that's actually happening soon. Um, I wonder if there's some way to uh, perhaps change the, uh, like, I know they're all kind of these red uh, symbols, perhaps having some different color or different symbols. I don't know if that's a easy double thing or a pretty big uh, ask IT-wise, but i- if that's a e- easier thing to do, I mean, that'd be really great, it would really allow, uh, those who are interacting with it, seeing um, you know, when they could expect these things to uh, to happen, or, or perhaps their status.
Absolutely. Thank you for that feedback. Uh, it's a off-the-shelf product to, to a large extent. Uh, but they're also a growing company who are utilizing feedback from their customers to actually build their product as well, so we'll definitely put that in line.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Councilmember Maloney, you were or, or maybe, maybe you're using Maloney, that's why I'm getting uh, messed up here. So, yeah, you go ahead and speak up, Councilmember Maloney and Councilwoman Roach, if you guys have any questions or comments. So if there's no further questions or comments, appreciate that, that, their presentation, and I know it was a lot of work and I'm looking forward to, to seeing all that come to fruition. So next, we'll move right on to the next item on the agenda, which is utility rate adjustments for water and sewer. Director Richa, or do you want to kick us off with that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and councilmembers.
Oh, excuse me, Councilwoman, uh, means Director Richa. Councilmember Maloney, were you, are you trying to get on? Oh, he, he, we have him muted. We're having technical difficulties.
This is Councilmember Roach, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you, Councilwoman Roach. Wha- what was that, uh?
Councilmember Maloney is unmuted on our end, so.
I'm unmuted on my end as well, and Councilmember Roach, you can hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, I'm not sure what changed. I didn't, I literally didn't do anything, push any buttons, so I'm not quite sure what changed there. But I did have some comments on the, or question on the CIP, if that's uh, all right?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I tried, I saw your name and I tried to address you, but I didn't hear anything, so obviously, go ahead, Councilmember Maloney.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Martinez. So I, I, I got some detailed questions, I'm still trying to absorb a lot of the details, so I'm, I'm not, not going to dig in real deep right this second. Well, I was looking, um, Director Sickel at the comparison of our currently approved uh, twenty-one, twenty-two CIP compared to the um, um, I guess a recommended revision to the proposed budget for that. And obviously, the number is, is, is kind of staggering, I'll be honest. It's excluding the about a thirty million dollar decrease in the process water reuse facility for just, you know, this, this timeframe. Uh, we're seeing a total of like forty million dollars of increased budget. Um, that's a pretty staggering number to me. Um, and we've talked a little bit about why some of those are, but I guess my question is, um, obviously we had some newly announced growth that was different than, that was perhaps different expected, and of course, we can't anticipate, you know, a large amount of industrial uh, growth on the east side of town in the way that, maybe in the way that it happened. But I would expect some of the stuff to be accelerations from future ports in the plan. But it looks like a lot of those projects weren't included in the future either. They weren't in the current CIP out into the twenty-seven timeframe at all. And I, I guess I'm surprised when we're seeing some of these projects, like for example, an upgrade to Broadmoor, uh, Boulevard and Interchange. We've known there's been an issue for a long time. Was that included for, as this says, for instance, on the CIP over the, over through like twenty-seven, or is that truly brand-new to our budget?
Councilmember Maloney, this is Steve Worley. I think what you're seeing is the, uh, a lot of effort put into um, evaluating what uh, developments are coming in uh, in the last year. I think the previous CIPs, we've known that some of those were needed, but with the Northwest Area Sewer LID that went in, it really brought a lot of attention to the Broadmoor area. And with that, and the, with the speed at which that attention came, I think it brought a lot of uh, needed CIP projects to the forefront that we weren't really anticipating in previous CIPs.
I gue- I guess I'm, I'm a little shocked because we knew that when that sewer went through, we were going to see a massive commercial growth, and we expected that within the next five years, at least I certainly did, and I, my conversations were. So I guess I'm really shocked to see that there's forty million dollars or something along those lines of brand-new projects that we had not identified before. Um, that's, that's a bit of a concern to me, and so my question, I, I guess will be, um, uh, what else are we missing? Um, you know, are, are, are we still missing other things that for, for continued growth that we're expecting coming up? I mean, I'm, I, you know, this is a, we're, we're up to half a, you know, half a billion dollars in CIP projects. Um, and only I think a year, about a year and a half ago, we were, what, half that? So it's, it's just a massive amount of growth, and I'm really surprised that we were, we were not able to anticipate more of this included in the CIP. And so I guess I would ask staff, uh, if we have, um, a, if we have a pretty good idea of some of the growth we're going to see, um, and I think we did in this case, um, we, I really want to know what those long-term numbers are going to look like. So we're not surprised by whatever sixty percent increase in our CIP budget. That, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars of additional expenditures, and I'm, I do not like to be surprised with that sort of figure, so anyways, I guess that's my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would just suggest that uh, for the benefit of the public and, and council certainly as well, you know, there's a lot of information that's, that's come our way over the last couple of years too. So the Broadmoor Master Plan effort and the Comprehensive Plan Update, the Environmental Impact Statement, the level of traffic analysis just out in the Broadmoor area has driven a lot of this discussion. Certainly, the, the changing fortunes of our industrial uh, users out at the Process Water Reuse Facility and, and understanding a little bit better what their needs are, them having a little bit more confidence in, in uh, uh, in where they're going. For instance, uh, I think two years ago, I think Director Worley can attest, and I certainly recall, there wasn't, wasn't a huge appetite to, to weigh in on uh, project that, that's ultimately probably going to be somewhere in the range of sixty to eighty million dollars out there. That was, you know, they, they were looking for like fourteen to twenty million dollars is what they were thinking. And so because of their plans and because of the fortunes of uh, those um, companies in where they're going, they have a lot more confidence in moving some of these big plans forward. Another big piece is the Northwest LI, ULID. That's not going to go forward if there isn't development up there, but uh, it's in our plan, and it represents a fairly significant number. Uh, so the, I think we probably, I think the best thing for us to do at this point would probably be to look and see where those big jumps are, uh, so we can kind of address the concern that uh, Councilmember Maloney's raised uh, for the, for the full council and, and for the public as well. Because I think there's some good information to back uh, most, if not all of those increases uh, yeah, that, that are, I think fairly reasonable as to what we knew a year and a half or a year ago uh, compared to what we know today and, and what those changes, some of those changes and conditions are.
Yes, and I would, I would add also that uh, this time last year, we were right in the middle of uh, the COVID issue, and I think we were being very conservative on what our outlook would be for the next six years for capital project or capital improvement program. And this year, I think we're in a better position to know where we sit revenue-wise. And then a lot of the stuff City Manager Zabel mentioned, as far as uh, industrial growth coming in, that moved up the Zone Three Reservoir Project significantly in our CIP. Um, and then that also makes us look harder at the Zone Two uh, water needs. And so, yeah, there's been a lot of changes from last year to this year in terms of what our projection for capital projects will be in the future.
Please, are you good with that, Councilmember Maloney?
Uh, I, I would be, I'll be interested to see the analysis. Um, for example, seven million dollars of Broad, of Broadmoor Interchange, I don't think that's uh, a surprise to any of us. In fact, I seem to recall that, um, many of us four years ago were identifying that as a key element of things that we want to make sure didn't happen on our watch, was to see that, that traffic back up significantly, as, as a, for instance. So I look forward to seeing the analysis of some of the differences and why we're seeing an increase of forty million dollars in projects in just one year. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, with that, as I, as I shared before, there's been a lot of analysis, and now we actually can identify what those projects are. It's one thing to say, I think I need a full interchange. It's another thing to say, what do we actually need? Do we need a loop ramp? Do we need widening? I think the conventional wisdom on Broadmoor is, and that's a great example, that interchange to talk about. Uh, conventional wisdom from the experts out there, including from DOT, was we needed a free right turn uh, eastbound to southbound on the ramp, and that would solve the backup problem. Further analysis demonstrates that's not true.
I think you, City Manager Dave Zabel. And if there's no further comments or questions, now we can go to the next item, which is the uh, utility rate adjustments for water and sewer. Director Richa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, as we've talked about, a lot of the projects that are coming up in the horizon for the city, um, we also need to talk about the funding part of it, which the Capital Improvement Plan does include. Uh, however, uh, with that comes uh, the conversation around rates. Um, just as uh, for education and information, uh, our utility fund overall, which includes water, sewer, uh, reuse facility, stormwater, and irrigation, all of them uh, for government accounting purposes are called enterprise funds. And what that essentially means is that they're treated as an independent business. I myself was quite shocked that there's two different types of accounting standards uh, for, for different funds, like for general fund and for the utility fund. Uh, and the utility fund accounting standard, I was taught in school, and then the general fund is a little bit different. Uh, quite archaic, if I might say. Uh, however, what it really means is that uh, your general government services and your utility services are two really different things. Uh, and your utility services are to be treated like a business. And that means that you have to have rates that support uh, the services that you're providing. Uh, general fund can always give funds to whichever other fund that the city owns, uh, as council chooses to. Uh, but it would be um, not, it would not be stable to provide support to utility fund on a regular basis. With that, uh, conducting a rate study on a very regular basis is critical for, for a utility fund. Uh, and in the last five years, uh, starting in two thousand fifteen, there was a comprehensive rate study for water and sewer services. Uh, subsequent years, we've done irrigation and stormwater as well. And um, and after that first comprehensive rate study uh, for water and sewer in two thousand fifteen, we've used the same ra- rate model, uh, the staff has to look at the sustainability of the services itself and come to council with recommendations uh, on uh, increases to the rates. We are, after five or six years, uh, doing another comprehensive uh, rate study uh, and uh, looking at this from a fresh perspective again. Uh, and um, essentially, one of the requirements for our utilities, uh, especially given, uh, we do issue uh, revenue bonds, uh, so we have obligation to our bondholders in terms of the level of um, security that the fund has, in terms of being able to pay uh, our obligations to the bondholders, uh, but then also to our ratepayers as well, to ensure that it is equitable uh, and that it is fair, uh, and that we're also able to invest in the infrastructure so uh, that we're able to sustain that level of service throughout the years. So with that, council, uh, staff, um, contracted FCS Group, which uh, a group that we've worked with in the, in the past as well, uh, this year. And we've been working, especially Public Works in the Finance Department, as well as the City Manager's Office, have been working throughout this year uh, to ensure that uh, we do the best rate study as we possibly can and try to limit uh, the impact to our customers as much as possible. Uh, with that, uh, we have Brooke Tasha, who is the project manager from FCS Group, who will be presenting um, on the results of the rate study for our water and sewer services. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, can you all hear me today?
Uh, we can hear you, yes, thank you. Good evening.
Great. Um, and we should, just to, to be sure here, are you going to be moving the slides um, on your end?
Yes, just say next slide and we will do it.
Perfect, good deal. All right, so we'll jump in here. Um, so hi, everyone. Uh, thanks for having me here today. Uh, as Director Sickel mentioned, I'm Brooke Tasha, Project Manager with FCS Group. Um, and we've really been working with uh, the city staff over the last several months to analyze the financial performance for the water and sewer funds. And so I'm here to talk about that projection today, so you can go ahead and move on there. Um, so first, first, we're going to give a little bit of background, talk a bit about the different steps of a rate study process, um, review our key assumptions and, and financial policies, and then we'll, we'll get to some of those results for each of the utilities. Next slide, please. Uh, so last time, and I know uh, Director Sickel kind of mentioned this already, but we did a financial study in twenty fifteen. Um, that study did result in a three-year rate path for each utility, so you can see here at that time, we were forecasting five percent annual rate increases for water and between nine point eight and nine percent annual rate increases for sewer. So sewer at that time was really kind of feeling more of the rate pressure, um, a- and largely because of uh, what the rate strategy included. So we were including some phasing in of some rate-funded capital, as well as constructing um, the wastewater treatment plant clarifier and secondary treatment projects. So there was, there was a lot of capital at that time for the sewer utility. Um, since that time, uh, increases for the water utility have been about three percent annually, um, and about four percent annually for, for the sewer utility. And again, you know, it's pretty typical that the city revisit these rates every three to five years, um, in terms of a more comprehensive study, uh, but making sure to, to look at uh, the rates, you know, each year, if, if not multiple times a year, to just make sure revenues and expenses are coming in as, as we uh, projected. Uh, next slide, please. So in a full rate study here, there's typically three parts. The first is the revenue requirement, where we're determining overall revenue levels uh, to meet all of our financial obligations. From there, uh, we can move on to a cost-of-service study, which breaks down the total revenue into pie pieces ultimately, allocating costs to customers that's commensurate with the way that they use the system. Uh, and finally, the last step involves a rate design, where we can address uh, really how we're charging our customers to generate the needed revenue, as well as what we're communicating to them through those rates. So uh, next slide, please. Today, our concentration is going to be on that first step of the diagram, the revenue requirement. So in this initial step, we're determining the overall amount of revenue we need uh, to fund all of our financial obligations on a standalone basis. So no subsidies uh, from any other utilities or funds. Uh, those obligations are things like our operating and maintenance expenses, any existing debt service, as well as any future debt service or dedicated rate funding capital, um, or dedicated rate funding, excuse me, to fund capital projects. So uh, while funding those ongoing operations and capital needs, we also need to make sure uh, that we're meeting our financial targets. Uh, so that's things like our, our debt service coverage ratios, as well as our reserve target balances. And we look at this comparison of revenues and expenses, uh, not only on an annual basis, but over a multi-year period to ensure that there's an understanding of those upcoming needs, with the ultimate goal of developing a rate and capital funding plan that's, that's aimed to meet those financial obligations while really minimize, minimizing customer impacts uh, to the extent that we can. Uh, next slide, please. So in order to build that forward-looking forecast, where we have to make a few assumptions. First is the study period, so we're going to be looking at, at the years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-seven. Uh, projected rate revenues were based on twenty twenty actuals plus growth. That growth is projected at three percent annually in the near term, decreasing to two percent from twenty twenty-five forward. That's just about the eight hundred to a thousand new connections a year. The twenty twenty-two budget was used as a baseline for expenses escalated into the future with various escalation factors, general cost inflation, salaries, benefits. In addition to that baseline, there's new FTEs- In addition to that baseline, there's new FTEs forecast for each utility. Uh, water will be adding a total of six and a half employees, with sewer forecast to add about nine and a half from twenty twenty-two again through twenty-seven. That results in about four new FTEs in twenty twenty-two, followed by three new FTEs annually um combined. Um, and since the city is currently undergoing an expansion fee study for each utility, those fees are likely to increase, so we're assuming a doubling of expansion fee revenue um from growth beginning in twenty twenty-three. There's also been a reallocation of inter-fund admin charges between the utilities based on the most recent citywide cost allocation study. Uh, so this results in a nine hundred thousand dollar cost uh decrease to the water utility and subsequently a nine hundred thousand dollar increase to the charges made to the sewer utility. And finally, in terms of new debt, uh revenue bonds will be assumed to be twenty-year terms, three and a half to four percent interest rates at one percent issuance cost. And then low-interest loan are forecast also to be twenty-year terms with a one point seven five percent interest rate and a one percent issuance cost. All right, next slide, please. Uh, so before we jump into the results, I just wanted to set uh the framework a bit with a quick reminder of the financial policies that are guiding this analysis. Uh, so first, we have our operating reserve. This is really meant to be that uh, uh, a balance to weather the typical cash flow fluctuations related to timing of revenues. So the target for the city for both water and sewer is sixty days of O and M expenses, which is between one and a half and two million for the water utility and one point two to one point six for sewer. Next is the capital reserves. This reserves is where we uh provide a source for funds for unexpected, unexpected repairs, project cost overruns, not necessarily catastrophic events. Uh, the target for the city here is two percent of their total assets, so that's between three and four point four million dollars for water and three and four million for sewer. Uh, the system reinvestment target is meant to ensure really that each utility is, is reinvesting in their aging infrastructure on an annual basis. Um, and they do this by dedicating an annual amount of rate revenue to that cause. Uh, so for this target on the, on the water side, we're aiming to phase that in throughout the study from seven hundred thousand dollars annually to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually by twenty twenty-seven. Um, and sewer would be increasing from eight hundred thousand dollars annually to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. And then finally, is our debt service coverage ratio. Um, this is going to be tested against the minimum bond covenant of one point two five to ensure we're, we're compliant there. All right, uh, so with that uh financial framework set, we can move on to the water results. Uh, next slide, please. So for the water utility, we've summarized the total financial obligations here. Existing revenue with applied growth increases from thirteen million to fifteen point three million by twenty twenty-seven. That revenue is in support of O and M expenses ranging from ten point eight to twelve point five million, and existing debt service of two million dollars decreasing to one point five million by twenty twenty-seven as, as a couple loans are paid back. Um, combined with the, these existing obligations is a capital funding plan to support a hundred and thirteen point four million dollars in projects throughout this, this six-year timeframe. Um, that would require new debt service increasing from two point seven million in twenty twenty-two to six point three million um by the time we reach twenty twenty-seven. Rate-funded capital increasing from six hundred and fifty thousand to nine hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, and we can see off to the right, the breakdown of capital funding assumptions in the pie chart. So the purple shading is meant to represent the total loan funding, fifty-eight million from revenue bonds and just under thirty million dollars from low-interest loans. Uh, the remaining capital expenditures be funded from cash reserves and connection charge revenues. Uh, the, the revenue bonds and low-interest loans that are forecast would be issued in, in three separate issuances in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-six. Um, and again, I know we've talked about this already, but it's definitely worth mentioning that uh the success of staff in being awarded those low-interest loans has saved approximately ten million dollars in borrowing, um just related to the lower interest rate there. So they've done a great job at, at trying to kind of mitigate the impacts of this large capital plan. Um, so next slide, please. So I know we've looked at this a lot already tonight. I won't dwell here too long. Um, just wanted to give you a quick reminder of the hundred and thirteen point four million dollars in future expenditures. About fifty-six percent of that uh is related to appearing, existing infrastructure that the city's planning to undertake, sixty point one million in treatment plant upgrades, twenty-six point seven million dollars for reservoir quad projects with the remaining costs really related to water means seismic improvements and various other projects. All right, so i- in this graph, we bring it all together, all of our uh financial obligations. You can see uh that expenses are, are the bars here. So the dark gray is the O and M, existing debt service is the green, new debt service in purple, and then cash-funded capital in the brown shades. Uh, when those expenses are compared to the forecasted revenues, what you see in that solid black bar, we see that while we're meeting obligations currently in twenty twenty-one, as we embark on uh funding that capital plan in the future, rates will need to increase to satisfy the future obligations. So in order to shift that lineup, um to meet those bars, we're looking at three years of eight and a half percent increases, followed by five percent annually through twenty twenty-seven. That's just about two dollars and fifty cents to two dollars and sixty-seven cents uh per month for a typical single-family residence in the near term. So next slide, if we look at a comparison of surrounding utilities for a typical residential user using about seven CCF a month, we see Pasco's existing rate of twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents in the green for the first year. When we add eight and a half percent, we'll bump up to twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, but wouldn't change our comparative position. Uh, by twenty twenty-seven, we do show that there in the blue, the rate would be thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents, which would move the city above Richland's current rate. Again, though, the caveat here is always that we would assume m- most, if not all of these utilities, will likely have rate increases throughout this timeframe as well. Next slide. So uh with the baseline revenue requirement, requirement in mind, uh, the city does have another option for consideration here for the water utility. Um, so we can utilize nine million dollars in American Rescue Plan funds to offset capital project costs for the West Pasco Treatment Plan Expansion. These funds would allow the utility to de- decrease revenue bond reliance by nine million dollars while still maintaining the fifteen million dollars in low-interest loans in twenty twenty-two. If that were to happen, we can move to the, the next slide. Yeah, perfect. Those uh dollars are applied uh to the water utility capital cost. We'd see the rate strategy shift downward, so now requiring six and a half percent annual increases from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four, down from eight and a half. So that's an impact of about a dollar seventy-five uh to two dollars per typical single-family residence. And just i- in summary there, move, yeah, moving on to the next slide, uh, looking at savings on an annual basis. Um, those would increase e- each year as rate uh increases are compounded. So initially, your savings would be six dollars and thirty-six to a typical single-family residence, um increasing to twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cents per year by twenty twenty-four. That's a total over the three, three years of about forty-two dollars in savings for residential customers. With that, we can move on to sewer. So uh similarly here, in the next slide, uh, we've brought together the, the revenue requirement components. So again, we have eleven point three million dollars in existing revenues, increasing to thirteen point four million with growth by twenty twenty-seven. Those revenues are supporting O and M expenses that grow from six point four million to ten million by twenty twenty-seven, and existing debt service that decreases just slightly from one point three to one point one million. Uh, in addition to those existing financial obligations, we also have developed a capital funding plan here um to fund the ninety-six point four million dollars in future, future capital expenditures. Um, that, that would require a need for new debt service ranging from two point one million uh increasing to four point one by twenty twenty-seven, uh with rate-funded capital increasing from seven hundred and twenty-five thousand to nine hundred and fifty thousand. So very similar, the pie chart will show the breakdown of, of funding here. Uh, purple being loan funding, so made up of forty-two point nine million in low-interest loans and nineteen million dollars in revenue bonds, with the remainder made up of uh cash funding and connection charge revenues. So again, you know, staff was very successful here in securing low-interest loans. We calculated savings related to, to those loans at about seventeen million dollars of the life of the loan from the lower interest rate. Uh, next slide, we'll take just another quick reminder on the capital program, uh making up the ninety-six point four million. Uh, more, slightly more of the sewer system is slated for upgrade capacity enhancing projects with about sixty-three percent of projects designated as such, uh fifty-five point eight million are planned for treatment plant upgrades, twenty-two point three million for Court and Sylvester mains, and the remaining spread among the lift stations, other main work and various projects there. So in the next slide, we're going to bring all those uh financial obligations together again, uh showing our expenses there by the bars, O and M in the dark gray, existing debt service in the green, new debt service in purple and cash-funded capital in the brown. Uh, when those expenses, again, we're comparing those to our forecasted revenues at the solid uh black line, we can see that for sewer, uh somewhat in contrast to water, we can meet our obligations through twenty twenty-three under existing rates uh before increases are needed to fully fund the capital plan. So this utility really got over the hump in the previous study where we can saw those nine percent increases and those were implemented. And because of that, we could now pull rates flat for a couple of years to allow for a rate payer break from a combined bill perspective here uh before resuming four percent rate increases from twenty twenty-two forward. Um, a four percent increase is just about a dollar fifty per month for a single uh family residence. So if we look at neighboring jurisdictions here, again, Pasco is kind of right in the middle of the group at thirty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents for a typical single-family residence. Um, and since we're not proposing a rate increase, those bars really could be in the same spot um because they would remain the same for twenty twenty-two. Um, by twenty twenty-seven, annual rate increases would bring the rate to forty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents, but still remaining uh the same comparative position. And again, we would likely expect some increases from these neighboring cities as well. Um, so, so finally, in terms of our combined bill, uh, again, Pasco's really in the middle of the group here. So the existing combined bill would increase from sixty-two dollars and nine cents to sixty-four dollars and thirty-six cents in twenty twenty-two, um assuming we went with those higher eight and a half percent rate increases on water and it, and reaching eighty dollars and eighty-eight cents by twenty twenty-seven. Uh, so still under West Richland and, and Walla Walla um by the time, and those are their current rates, again, by the time we reached twenty twenty-seven. Uh, so in summary tonight, uh, the hope is to get a consensus or some direction on a selective rate path for the water and sewer utilities with the big question really related to whether or not to apply the American Rescue Plan dollars uh to offset some capital costs and bring the rate path down from eight to six and a half percent over the next few years for the water utility. Um, ultimately, the goal is to have rates effective by January first or, or as soon as possible thereafter. Uh, looking forward, as I, as I mentioned, you know, this is really just the first step in the process. And so next year, we'll work with staff to update the cost of service analysis where we start to address that cost allocation process and aligning those costs with um those that, that use the system and how they use it. Um, and as well as taking a look at the expansion fee analysis to, to see uh how those costs might not, and, and what sort of additional revenue we can expect from those, those growth fees. And that will wrap it up on my end. You can open up for questions.
All right, well, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council?
With Councilmember Maloney?
Yes, Councilmember Maloney. Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Um, this is going to be a more general comment. Um, it's something I just already uh, uh, shared with staff, and I just wanted to make sure, bring it up to, to council. Um, you know, with, with our total allocation of what, whatever is it, eighteen point four million dollars for ARPA funds, uh, the proposed amount would be a full half of all available funds for the, uh, for the ARPA projects and would preclude a number of, of projects that we really haven't discussed yet, but we're on our proposed list. So um, I, I, I'm very much interested in understanding um more of what those trade-offs would be. Obviously, there's a lot of attractiveness to um, you know, making sure that we're helping out all of our ratepayers across the entire city. Um, while the dollar sign for each individual household is not large, it does, it, it does help everyone out a bit. So there's a lot of attractiveness to that, but it's also the trade-offs that I think we, we don't, I, I know I certainly don't feel comfortable understanding just yet. So look forward to hearing more of that before I, I really feel comfortable, um, you know, supporting a direction on, on this at all. Um, so that really is the crux of it. Obviously, you know, we understand that there's a whole lot of projects. We just went through the CIP about how much uh we need to get done. So obviously, the fact that we are going to have to increase rate sum is, is unfortunately, is one of the unfortunate realities. Um, but the question for me on the, on the, whether or not we subsidize with ARPA funding is really, really hinges on what those trade-offs are for the city overall and our, how they affect our goals. So uh, just, just my commentary. I guess no, no real question, just wanted to, to highlight that's what, uh, had a little bit of conversation with us, with staff on that earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Would this increase, would it be voted on next week, or do we have more time?
Yeah, we have more time than that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I anticipate bringing back uh a discussion for uh Councilmember Maloney's suggestion uh next week on the, on the ARPA list that council's kind of been working on. Uh, update on where we're at on that and what our experience has been. And then council can have that discussion and we can, we can add this as an alternative to that list as well.
Okay. All right, thank you, Councilmember Shroden.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know, uh, who, I'm just going to shoot this and someone answer. Um, my understanding is this would impact every household in the city of Pasco and, as well as commercial businesses, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
All of our customers.
Do we have a single item on, under ARPA that is that expansive, that reaches every individual to this rate on our list? Or is this the unique project that it is the lone comprehensive citywide benefit?
Uh, in terms of?
Of a direct benefit. I mean, I think indirectly, everything benefits the city, no question. But as far as every single rate payer, this seems to be the only project that we have that can actually touch every person that's spending money eh, as a requirement of the city, quite frankly, right? So, you know, I, I, I recognize the concern that this is half of our money, but th- if this is the lone project that touches every resident or every rate payer, I think we need to take that into heavy consideration, that we're not showing any preference or benefit to any particular segment of the community, whether that's commercial, industrial, residential. Um, from my perspective, if we're able to hit ratepayers across the board, this is tremendously beneficial. It is the most uh equitable and, and fair distribution of money that I think we can spend uh if every individual rate payer is going to benefit for this for a minimum of three years. So I'll express my gratitude for uh looking into this. Uh, is it a lot of money? Absolutely. Um, but I don't know that we could spread it out any better. So I, I'm certainly in support of the way this is teed up.
Thank you, Councilmember Shroden. Yes, uh, City Manager Dave Zabel?
I would just suggest that uh, wh- while the rates are uh for the next few years and that calculation was that the debt that you'd otherwise incur would be probably a twenty-year bond. So it actually would benefit ratepayers for the life of that bond, where you wouldn't have to pay debt service and provide more flexibility for the council and, and the city.
We have any idea when we'd have to tee up that bond?
Uh, it would very likely have to be next year, um, because we have quite a few projects on schedule at this point.
Okay. Do we happen to know from the school district's perspective if they're looking at running a bond in the next three years? That's not a question I've ever asked, but I'm just, I mean, I'm looking at this bond, a couple other bonds, where if we're going to do the PFD bond, I mean, we're bonding our people. And we need to be careful of that. And if the school bond's going to run another hundred million dollar one, which is their last cost in the next three to five years, we absolutely have to do what we can to invest money that's, that's coming from other sources. Um, so from my perspective, this is, this is one of the ways to cut back on bonding our people.
Thank you.
I can definitely contact the school district and get that answer to you, if, if they do have one.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions and comments, thank you for that report. And then we can move on to the next item. And next, we have the amendment to the Mid-Columbia Library Agreement. And Director Rakai, do you want to?
Let me get caught up here. We had a slot, some slides out of order, Mr. Mayor. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Good evening, Zach Rakai, ACS Director. Uh, in twenty-ten, uh, inter-local agreement between the city of Pasco and Mid-Columbia Libraries was entered into. It's a ten-year agreement to provide uh facility location and library services to the community. One year ago, on October of twenty twenty, that uh agreement was extended one year uh during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. It was determined that uh both the city of Pasco and Mid-Columbia Libraries were decidedly busy handling pandemic-related issues. So we decided to expand the um agreement for an additional year. With new growth and uh certainly the potential of uh additional facilities on its way, um, we determined to uh not necessarily enter into a new inter-local agreement for ten years at this time, but to extend the current agreement six months. Uh, the resolution and amendment that's in front of council this evening is a request for a six-month extension in order for the city and Mid-Columbia Library to strategically plan future facility locations in relation to shorten- In order for the city and Mid-Columbia Library to strategically plan future facility locations in relation to short and medium term uh capital facility plans. This proposed extension would allow for su- sufficient time for each party to examine the tenants of the original agreement. Uh determine a collective future based upon current trends and explore the potential for expanded and shared facilities. Um Mid-Columbia Libraries in the City of Pasco are developing a collaborative strategy to enhance the service to the community. Part of this discussion has been dis- uh discussing, part of this discussion has been to uh establish a presence in the eastern side of Pasco for the library. Which includes the possibility of Mid-Columbia Libraries to uh be included with the expansion and renovations of the Martin Luther King Center. Um as well, the city is looking at additional parks and recreation facility expansion in Western Pasco. Uh with our uh parks, recreation and open space plan that's currently uh finishing out. Um the timing of these efforts will run into early twenty twenty two. Uh MLK uh the MLK Martin Luther King Center is uh on the request for ARPA funding. And so that will determine the scale and scope of that renovation. Um and the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan is due to complete in March of twenty twenty two, which would give us a better location. A notion as to where additional community facilities are needed. However, with that in mind, with the expansion, um Mid-Columbia Libraries and the City of Pasco determine that we haven't had a presentation or just a general community update to the city council. And with that in mind, I have Kyle Cox, the Executive Director of Mid-Columbia Libraries here this evening. Uh to share an update on the library system and its relation to Pasco residents. Um Mr. Cox. Go up to the podium and.
Good evening, Mr. Cox, and uh thank you for being patient with us tonight and waiting for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you to uh Mayor Martinez and members of council for the opportunity to address you tonight and share information. On Mid-Columbia Libraries and the library services we've been providing to the city. I did want to recognize that Martine Valdez, the Chairman of our Board of Trustees, is also here, so thanks to Martine for being here. I know it is getting late, and I'm gonna try to keep it brisk and move it along as much as possible out of respect for your time. But again, appreciation to uh the council and to staff for this opportunity to share uh with what we've been doing. Looking forward to uh hopefully finalizing our interlocal agreement pretty quickly in here. Uh and figure out a path forward for potentially more facilities and more service points for your residents into the future. So just very quickly, uh Pasco's been providing library services to its residents for a hundred and eleven years. The first library uh actually happened because of a Carnegie grant, as many libraries did across our country. Uh it's still uh standing right now. Of course, it's the Historical Society Museum uh was the original library. But a hundred and eleven years ago, uh Pasco started providing library services. In nineteen forty nine or seventy two years ago, the residents of the county that are now mostly, I should say, in this part of the county, residents of the citizens or city of Pasco. Uh started getting services from Mid-Columbia Libraries. And then in nineteen seventy three, Pasco began contracting with MCL. So forty eight years ago, uh the City of Pasco and MCL uh began our partnership together that continues to go strong today. So what do we do? Our mission is to enhance our region's quality of life. That's number one. We are in the business of uh providing access to both physical and digital books, audiobooks, films, series, magazines, newspapers, databases. We give access to technology for a number of people through public computing, uh wireless services, printing, copying, et cetera. In in a pre and completely post-COVID world, we also provide regular and frequent programs and events designed to inform and educate. And to make learning fun, engaging and accessible to all. So for those who don't know, Mid-Columbia Libraries was set up again in nineteen forty eight to serve the unincorporated residents of Benton and Franklin Counties. Uh over the years, we have annexed uh cities have annexed into the district, including Kennewick, Benton City, Conell, Kalotas and Mesa. We also have contracts with uh of course, the City of Pasco, the City of Prosser and West Richland. We serve Adams County uh with a library up in Othello through contract as well. We have twelve brick and mortar locations, a digital branch, we do delivery to the homebound, and we do uh rural services delivery in addition to all the other things I've mentioned. We are governed by a seven member uh Board of Trustees that are jointly appointed by Benton and Franklin County uh Commissions. Martine Valdez, as I mentioned, is here. He's our Board Chair. We have three representatives uh for Franklin County with Martine Valdez, Susan Pacey and Sandy LaPage. And we uh have four positions for Benton County. That's how it's been for a number of years. Um Ed Frost, Louise Matzner, Yvonne Guian, and then we have a vacancy right now, uh we're hoping to have appointed sometime soon. Uh but they are our governing board. They provide oversight to me as the Executive Director and Chief Librarian. Uh and they uh are are a great group of volunteers. So for those who don't know, uh libraries in our state are primarily funded through property tax levies. You have two different modes. You can provide library services to your residents. You can either do a special purpose district, which is what we are, um or you can do a city library. If it's a special purpose district, uh library district, you're funded through a property tax levy. This is the current tax levies that we have in existence. You can see MCL only is at thirty one cents per thousand right now. Walla Walla County is at forty seven cents, Columbia County forty four, Whitman was at fifty, Adams County is at forty four. That's the part of the county we don't serve. Uh Grant County is at thirty five. They're part of the North Central System, which is based in Wenatchee. Uh they're one of our comparables. Yakima County is a single county uh district at thirty nine cents. And then Clickatack County is part of the Fort Vancouver System, uh which is a big regional system based in uh Vancouver, Washington. But uh looking at this again, our levy rate is the lowest in our region. It's been a part of that, of course, has to do with growth, massive growth in our region. But as a result of that, though, we unfortunately have the lowest uh per capita funding out of all the thirteen major systems in the state. Um when you look at this, and I've shown it, uh the red is Mid-Columbia. You're gonna see this in the other charts. Black are are other Eastern Washington systems, so that includes the North Central System based out of Wenatchee, uh Spokane County. Spokane Public, uh which is their city library, and then Yakima County. Uh the other uh gray systems you can see here are the other thirteen large systems in the state. You have everything from King County, which is like our King Kong. It is the biggest and richest system uh almost in the entire country. You have Seattle Public Library, et cetera. But our funding per capita, again, by far is below our Eastern Washington average uh and actually beats uh Yakima County by about fifteen cents. I did want to mention COVID. I know we're probably all sick about hearing of COVID, uh but COVID did affect everything uh for us. Um initially, uh Governor Inslee's emergency orders made it so that we cannot provide any onsite service until phase three. That included uh curbside wasn't actually part of the original proposition. So uh MCL had piloted curbside services prior to COVID in five of our branches. Uh we worked with the state. We advocated, I advocated very hard to add curbside because prior to that, it wasn't even an option. Uh we were able to get the governor's office to agree to that, that they would add the curbside option in counties that were in phase two. Well, if you remember, we were never gonna get to phase two anytime soon. We got frozen in phase uh one. That was a major problem for us because we're seeing the needs of our of your residents, of our customers, and saying, we gotta get books into the hands of kids. This is taking too long. So we got all the uh phase one libraries in central Washington together, and I figured we had to come up with a new strategy because waiting wasn't gonna work. So we worked with the Benton Franklin Health District and then with the State Department of Health to show that libraries could safely operate and deploy curbside even in phase one counties. And then MCL, working through this process, uh received approval for the variance from the state to begin curbside before phase two in Benton and Franklin Counties, so we were able to do that. Thankfully, I didn't realize this, but we blazed the trail for every other library in a phase one county to start providing curbside. And as a result, we were recognized by our peers for being the catalyst in expanding curbside services. This is before we could even open up the building. Uh to modify uh phase one counties, and we helped reestablish critical library services for nearly six hundred and forty thousand Central Washingtonians. So I'm pretty proud of that. Uh it took a lot of work, and I'm glad that we were able to do that. By October, we were able to resume uh in branch services. Again, that was a dialogue back and forth with Olympia. And I'm proud that each one of the large Eastern Washington systems reopened within a month. Not to point fingers, but the Western Washington systems did not move as quickly as we did. I think we realized that we had to get uh books back into the hands of kids. Back in the hands of students and be reengaging, so. And as as you're aware, uh it's been kind of this unusual, what I would call, period of regulatory volatility from November to present in terms of what was gonna come from the state. We had uh state or industry specific guidelines that got changed quite a few times. We were able to open, then we closed, then we reopened uh based on this feedback. Uh but it looks like hopefully things are gonna settle down uh into the near future. As far as uh looking at metrics, I'm a big numbers guy. I love metrics. It helps you as council see how we compare to other systems. So this is regi- registered cardholders per capita. This is the whole district. I am gonna show you Pasco specific numbers. Uh but right there, we have point seven three registered heart uh cardholders per capita. Uh we're number four when you look at the big systems. Um up there, of course, is North Central, which is pretty close to us, uh Spokane Public, and the Tacoma has a very high rate. But again, well above the Eastern Washington average for uh per capita cardholders. Our checkouts per capita are also significant are significantly higher than Eastern Washington average. You can see North Central out of Wenatchee and Yakima are significantly lower than what we do in terms of business uh up there with Spokane um County as well. And of course, you've got Seattle and King, um which are just because of obviously wealth, I would say. And um population density are gonna be consistently knocking out of the park, but happy to show that we are again above Eastern Washington average. Every year, we do our annual customer satisfaction survey. Um in twenty twenty, we were interested to see what those numbers would be because we had the whole uh COVID crisis and trying to adapt. Um our um our end was two hundred, or sorry, two thousand uh three hundred thirty seven uh participants. Which gave us a ninety five percent confidence interval on our data, as well as a um plus or negative margin of error of two percent. Our average customer satisfaction rating, and again, this was from twenty twenty, uh was a a nine point zero nine, which is actually very high. We were very happy to see that. It shows again that in spite of all the difficulties and our adaptations trying to serve our customers, that our customers were actually very happy, and that's consistent with previous to COVID years. Our likelihood to recommend in twenty twenty, we ask this every year, uh it's how you get your net promoter score. So what is the likelihood that you would recommend your library to someone who doesn't use it? And you can see here, uh just people who gave us a number ten was eighty two percent of their customers. That's a huge number. Um when you look at uh for industry specifics for net promoter scores, our net promoter score is an eighty four. If you wanna know how to do that, you take your top two minus your bottom six. So your top two are your promoters, your bottom six are your detractors, and you'll get your net promoter score. For uh education in the trading sector in twenty twenty, the average was seventy one. So again, significantly higher uh than even our industry in terms of our net promoter score. So during COVID, what did we do? Well, we had to adapt. Again, we had piloted curbside, so that was an easy extension. We were able to work with the state to get us to be able to do it. We actually showed a number of other systems how to do it because they had not piloted it before like we had, was very happy that we were ahead of the curve. Um we expanded with online print drop services, so if someone needed something printed, this was true in school, we were able to just tell us, we print it, we'd have it available, we gave it to them. That was very helpful for a number of students and families with students, so people applying for jobs, et cetera. It was really helpful. Um we expanded our Wi-Fi presence in all of our facilities. We worked with the cities and the PUDs to make sure that our range for Wi-Fi was significantly bigger. Uh that was a, we saw people sitting outside the library, students who couldn't get in because we couldn't let people in. But we did what we could to make sure that we could improve access to technology. We also expanded our uh ask our librarian service. Um you know, typically, it's account issues. What do I do? But we asked people what they wanted to, you know, what do you wanna read? We gave them suggestions. We helped reserve for them. It was found to be very popular. So as far as service in the City of Pasco, uh hopefully you're aware, we have two branches, uh one on Hopkins Street, which is uh was built back in nineteen sixty one. Uh or actually, sorry, sixty two, it opened and operated as an independent city library for nine years until the city uh started contracting with MCL. Uh the building's been remodeled multiple times, most recently in two thousand eight, uh with a major technology and infrastructure upgrade, and in twenty fourteen. Uh it's about twelve thousand square feet and is open seven days a week. We have forty three public computers in the branch. And the Pasco branch houses a significant Spanish language collection from picture books and board books all the way up to adult nonfiction. The West Pasco Branch opened in twenty thirteen as a result of a public-private partnership. It is leased by MCL per the terms of our uh current interlocal. While only sixty two hundred square feet, the West Pasco Branch has the second highest checkouts across our three counties. It is second only to the large Kennewick branch on Union Street, which in perspective is over thirty two thousand square feet. So your your six thousand square foot uh West Pasco Branch is circulating almost, again, it is. We talk about how much it checks out. A huge amount of books, materials are going in and out of that branch. It's popular, it's heavily used. It was designed to welcome and excite thousands of families and children who are moving to Pasco and live in Pasco. That was really the intention, looking at the demographics especially of that area. Uh our greatest challenge with this building is it's not, again, it's well-used, it's well-beloved, it's just too small. When you look at the size of your city and the growth and the demands that we have, it's just too small, um but it is in a great location and again, very heavily used. When you look at customer demographics for twenty twenty, you can see um Pasco has over fifty five thousand uh cardholders registered to MCL. It's about a seventy two percent uh of your households have an MCL card. What's interesting, though, is of that fifty five thousand, over seven thousand of those customers are using other MCL branches. So they're not registered at Pasco or West Pasco. A significant portion are registered at the Kennewick branch, which again is our our biggest branch. Um also, you have about forty five hundred people that are um uh use your branches that don't live in the City of Pasco. Most of those people are gonna be coming from Southern Franklin County. As MCL, again, having an MCL card, you can use any of our branches. You can go anywhere within the system. If the item's not at your uh library, we'll deliver it to you. If it's not uh being checked out, we can typically get it to you in twenty four hours. Um so we see quite a bit of cross borrowing, cross use. Um also, as a result of COVID, we started using our instant digital cards, so we use a third-party authentication uh based on, I think, your telephone billing address. You can get it, and if you get it quickly, you could have access to our entire digital collection in a couple of minutes. It was massively popular uh uh during COVID. It's still very popular. I average our, the average age of the cardholder uh for uh Pasco residents is about thirty six, a little bit more than six, thirty six and a half. As far as library usage in twenty twenty, over three hundred thousand items were checked out from um uh Pasco library, or pa- checked out to Pasco library customers. Forty four percent of those checkouts were digital. It's a huge jump, but again, because of the complications and the usual nature of COVID and not being able to open up our branches, that's not surprising. We also offer grab bags, uh which and towards the end of the year, grab bags were a service where a family could say, you know, what are the ages of the kids in your family? What are their interests? Our staff would go through and basically do personal shopping, check it out. And we found they were massively popular. People loved the service. They didn't have to think about it, uh especially during COVID. We were very worried about kids not being able to get access to materials in their school library. Um we also launched, I'll talk a little bit about it in the next couple of slides, SORA. We worked with the Pasco School District. Uh uh over ten thousand items were checked out by Pasco School District kids from our digital collection um uh for the last half of twenty twenty. Um again, that's the, I think, a a big future goal is getting even more and more kids to use SORA, but again, I'll talk about that uh pretty quickly here. Uh as I mentioned, our digital library is always open. That was a huge advantage before we were allowed to do curbside or let people into the branch. We saw massive increases in terms of people going over to the digital collection. Um something that we've been investing in since two thousand nine, ahead of the curve, and that really paid off. So SORA, what is SORA? What SORA does is it allows a s- a student, again, we have an agreement with Pasco uh School District. You've got your student ID. Let's say you need to get something to read, but you don't wanna go to the library, you know, things are going on. All you need is your ID, and you can log in through this access point and get access to our whole digital collection. It means that kids don't have to come into the library to get a library card. They already have access. It was a huge thing. I was very concerned with access to reading materials. Uh kids couldn't get to the school library, they can get to the 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 public library. What are we gonna do to help kids? Well, this is the future. MCL uh spends significantly more on new materials every year than than school districts do because that's what we do. We're set up to do that. By doing this, it means that kids have instantaneous access to our entire digital collection to help with their reading and learning. So very popular. We're seeing major growth in this. I'm excited to see where it goes, but it was a major win-win for students and families. Uh library programs. MCL has traditionally, again, COVID kinda smacked things off, unfortunately, but we've had a a long history, I think, very popular, consistent. Uh community-focused programs. You can see Michelle Whitney here, of course, at one of our superhero storytimes. Um one of the biggest changes was not being able to do full suite onsite programs and events, unfortunately, during COVID. Uh we started doing uh outdoor programs over the summer. We are looking at restoring and getting back into uh regular programming, especially definitely into twenty twenty two. We've got some branches that are resuming uh programming indoors as well, um so looking forward to doing that. Uh as far as program participation per capita, MCL is typically in the top three in the state for this. We were number two in twenty twenty. Uh some of that has to do with a synchronous programming, like online storytime, on-demand storytime. Things like bilingual storytimings, we added as well to make sure that um uh people, families that spoke English and Spanish had access to storytime, even though they couldn't get into the branch. Here's an example of just typically all the things that are going on. Again, you can see some of it's on Facebook, it's on YouTube, et cetera. But looking forward to getting back to to normal uh next year. Some more examples of things that we brought in. We worked with the Pacific Science Center on a number of online programs. The Lucky Band, uh we typically bring them in in the summer for summer reading program. They did a a virtual concert, Reptile Man. Again, kids show up, we get a thousand people showing up for people to to see all of his reptiles he brings to the park, um but did that online. We also, every fall, do Mid-Columbia Reads. That's our community-wide read. Unfortunately, because of COVID, uh a lot of authors aren't traveling. We couldn't get people here. Uh we are gonna do an online program with one of our authors, but you can see here, um we did three different uh reading levels. You Matter by Christian Robinson for younger readers, middle grades, so that's gonna be middle school, high school, is Darius, The Grade Is Not Okay by Adib Karam. He's gonna be actually presenting later this month uh virtually, and then There There by Tommy Orange is our adult title. We've also spent a lot of time making sure that we uh have a representative collection, looking at things like Asian American Pacific Islander, American Sign Language Collection. Thinking about uh different religions. thinking about different religions, of course, Ramadan, the refugee experience. We have a very robust Spanish language collection already, but making sure that we are being intentional in developing a collection that's representative, that lets people explore interests, explore new things, explore their own cultures. And I think that we've done a fantastic job with that. I'm gonna skip this one. So it's providing value to the residents of Pasco. I do wanna call out, we have done a number of partnerships over the years. On the left-hand side, you can see our Inspiring Latinos video series. It was a project that we did with the Tri-Cities Latino Community Network. The series is a bronze winner of the, of the Telly Awards, been massively popular. I know it's something that other libraries in the state have seen this and saying, we need to be doing this. Let's tell positive stories about our community members. And I, again, I've been really supportive of it. I love the fact that our communications department, working with the Tri-Cities Latino Community Network, was recognized nationally for this. Really good initiative. We've worked, of course, with Pasco Chamber of Commerce, the Tri-Cities Regional Chamber of Commerce, the Tri-Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Sabrondo with the schools, the Tri-Cities Latino Community Network, and of course, the Pasco School District on a number of initiatives for years. I'm really proud of how much our staff do get out into the community. That's something that we, I think, missed a lot during COVID. And I'm, as we're ramping up, I'm looking forward to getting more out into the community again and being more visible. Our collection, so when you think of a library, you think of books typically, you think about the collection. It's something I'm very proud of. We put a lot of, I think, intentionality and resources into. One point three million of our budget was invested into materials to be available to all customers. Our entire collection's worth about ten point eight million dollars right now. Mid-Colombia Libraries has the largest digital Spanish language collection in the state of Washington, and we have the second-largest physical collection. We also have one of the largest ebook and audiobook, e-audiobook collections outside the Seattle metro area. And when you consider that we're the poorest per capita, I think that's a pretty big accomplishment that we've been able to curate and build a very successful, well-used collection. You can see here, one of the things that we did because of cost savings is we redirected money directly into the collection to make sure people had access to more materials, more titles, they didn't have to wait so long. It was more of, okay, what can we do in a particularly bad situation? Well, let's redirect funds, let's put more materials out there, let's help people in a very difficult time. And so we were actually number one in the state last year for percentage of budget spent on new materials. As far as checkouts per collection, all was spent, again, well above Eastern Washington average. We were number four in the state. What that means is that we're being very strategic in what we buy. We have to. We don't have as much money as King County. But what we do buy is what people want. We listen to our customers, we develop a collection, we're very responsive, and our use shows that, I think, over and over again. Again, considerably higher than our Eastern Washington comparables. Our collection items per capita, above the Eastern Washington average. Our main difficulty with this has to do with physical space. We just don't have the same square footage that these bigger systems do. And at some point, whether or not we like it, we have to weed. We have to pull items because we just run out of room. Some of these bigger systems, you see Seattle Public Library has a giant downtown facility, King County has a number of branches, to film a public library, et cetera, but again, above the Eastern Washington average for how many items we provide per capita. Digital collection holdings, this is also, I actually have Seattle and King County just going off the chart because I didn't think you needed to see the full thing. They have much larger collections than we do, but they have a lot more money. You also have Snow Isle, Snow Homish Island County is directly north of King, very wealthy system, and then Pierce, of course. And then right there after that is us at MCL, at, again, almost two hundred and thirty thousand items for digital. So we're the little engine that could on this, and we are slowly coming up against Puget Sound, and I'm very proud of that. One of the last things I wanna leave you with, and we ask a number of questions on our annual customer satisfaction survey, but we ask parents specifically about learning and literacy, using their library, and how it impacts their experience with their kids. So just a couple of things. Ninety-four percent of parents reported, as a result of using Mid-Colombia Libraries, their children read more, they enjoy reading more, and they're more confident in their reading. Ninety percent of parents reported, as a result of using Mid-Colombia Libraries, they feel better connected with their children. And ninety-two percent of parents believe their children's lives are better than if they had not used Mid-Colombia Libraries, which I think is pretty amazing. Again, we get really, we've got great customers, we love serving the city of Pasco, but seeing these numbers, again, with a very good confidence interval and a very small margin of error is pretty phenomenal to see. And especially after a tough year with COVID, that was really good for our staff to see. We have a fantastic staff. So looking forward to the future in two thousand twenty-two, we're looking forward to working with the city to finalize our new inter-local agreement. We really hope we can figure out how to be in the Martin Luther King Center. I think that would be fantastic for us to have a library out there, as well as future options. You've got a vastly, very quick-growing city, and we wanna be able to serve your customers and your residents the best that we can. We're looking at doing a regional community-wide needs survey. It's been about ten years since we did, seeing how things have changed. Again, COVID did change a lot of, we're seeing this in a number of projects on the construction site, but how has our community changed as a result of COVID? What do we need to do better to better serve your residents, our customers, to make it work? And then as a result of the feedback from our, our regional-wide survey, we're gonna be starting a whole new strategic planning process as we adapt and look to the future. So that being said, again, thank you, the City of Pasco council members for continuing to work with us. Thank you to staff, they've been great to work with. Congratulations on a hundred and eleven years of library service. And thank you for allowing Mid-Colombia Libraries to serve you for the past forty-eight years as your library provider.
Welcome.
I just tried to get it through.
That was, that was great. No, we appreciate the collaboration and, and what Mid-Colombia Libraries does for, for our communities as well. Any questions or comments from, go ahead, Councilman O'Sullivan?
I just wanna say thank you. I, I have some personal takeaways that can help me improve the way I, I mean, obviously, pre-pandemic, we were using the library a lot and that caused things, but also just personally how I can work with my kids in particular. My, my oldest is eight, my middle one's six, little guy's three, so he's not quite reading yet. But the, the way I can improve my relationship, just looking at that, that learning slide that you have on the back, I appreciate that. So I'm gonna take this to heart. So I appreciate your passion.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, just wanna put a plug out there. I use Libby a lot, so use it. It's, it's fun, just listen to it. Even while you're on the road, it's a good one. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Maloney?
I think it's, I'm in, I'm in his spot.
Okay.
This is Councilmember Roach, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Roach.
Just wanna say thank you to Kyle for the presentation, and I actually appreciated, I mean, all the information, but particularly, I know there was a point of, you know, frustration as a parent and with two children in dual-language program in Pasco, and I don't have a good library at home of Spanish-speaking children's books. And so I had a lot of frustration at the beginning of the pandemic, trying to keep their Spanish literacy up to where it needed to be, and it was being reflected in their grades, and I did not know any of that storytelling about what you just described about going back and forth with Olympia in the governor's office to just even get curbside, because I know I was hearing from parents who are, you know, part of that same dual-language cohort. Why can't we get books from the library? And so I did not know that that, that, that fight, that advocacy was going on, and so I appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach, Councilwoman O'Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I think, you know, just seeing how you're doing more with Lassis, really, really inspiring. I, I would say, you know, one of the things I really appreciate is that, just that, in your presentation, even a little bit background, is that there's, there's some decisive actions happening that really, you know, are, are now paying off, you know, by, just by the numbers. And one of those, I, you know, I remember talking to you about was the, the, uh, uh, doing away with fairs, with, with late fees. Growing up, I was one of those.
Yeah, we don't have late fees anymore.
I was one of those kids who would be ashamed to go back because I had all my fees and I didn't wanna, I, I didn't wanna have to not borrow books. And so I, removing that barrier, I think, is really one example that I think is, is now showing as well, so really appreciate this presentation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Milley?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I love the presentation, and as a book nerd myself, I love spending time in your library, and especially before COVID. And it's just nice to be able to go and get different books, and you don't have to go out and buy them. And again, I just, I love spending time, and I could spend all day, which makes my wife a little unhappy, but I just love reading, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Well, Kyle, there is one thing, so there's a lot of literature for the dual language and, and Spanish speaking. We have a, a very fast-growing Russian population. What can you tell me real quickly about what we're doing for them to provide them with?
Yeah, I, I thank you for bringing that up. So one of the things that we have been doing is we've been working with our school districts specifically, because they were the groups that we realized had the best pulse on the languages being spoken in our communities. And so one of the things that we did is we worked with, I know, Pasco School District, Kennewick School District, to say, what are the languages that are growing the fastest? We've been investing in Russian language materials. I also believe we've been investing in Chinese as well, because that's a growing population. But yeah, one of the things that we're definitely mindful of, and that's one of the reasons why we're looking at that community needs assessment, is who are we missing? You know, we, I think, have done fantastic work supporting Spanish materials especially. We're one of the biggest ones in the state, and we're on target for that. But not losing sight of the fact that the library is a growing organism, and we have to grow with our community because we serve our community. So what can we do for that? Well, part of that is identifying languages that we need to enhance. If you go into the Pasco library, you will see ranges of Russian right now. I just was in there on Friday. I didn't get to tell you because I was going through fast, but we just hosted our state librarian, our new state librarian, Sarah Jones. And one of the, we, I took her to Pasco and West Pasco, and one of the things she said was, I can see what your priorities are. You value children, you value families, you value learning. I've been to so many libraries that are dark and gray and have stuff that people don't want, and that's not the case in your library. And that was nice to hear at Pasco and Hopkins Street. But if you go down there right now, we have shelves now of Russian language material, just trying to build that, making people that read Russian as their preference comfortable in their library. Again, we are in the business of helping people learn and grow, and identifying groups that we can also work with and help, learn and be part of that community is important to us, so I, I appreciate your comment, Saul, and we've been working on it pretty hard, so.
That's great. Well, we should appreciate the, the, again, the collaboration, the work you do in, in our city and, and what services you provide for our communities, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Again, thank you to council.
All right. So we have three more items left. Before we get to the bottom of our list, I would like to ask council, do you guys wanna take a ten-minute break? Stretch your legs out a little bit. So it is eight twenty-two, at eight thirty-two, we'll be back after this break. And so, yeah, let's just go ahead and get, take a break for a little bit. Thank you. Thank you. So it is eight thirty-two and we will get back into our session here. And we are on item F, which is amendments increasing residential building capacities. Director Rick White, would you like to start us off with that, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And council, this is an update on the work the staff has undertaken since 2019, actually, late in the year in 2019, when the city was awarded grant funds to explore increasing residential building capacities through House Bill nineteen twenty-three. We focused on three particular areas and our planning manager, Mr. Jacob Gonzalez, is here to give council an update on that effort.
Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, members of council. So just a quick summary on House Bill nineteen twenty-three. It was enacted by the state legislature in the summer of 2019 to address the rapidly growing housing crisis across the state. The city of Pasco was one of fifty-two or fifty-three communities in the state of Washington. I think the only one in this region that had applied for grant funding to pursue code regulation changes to address the housing challenges with the three action items you see in the small print below. And we'll cover action items one and three in this discussion. So the first one was with regards to the missing middle, which is typically defined as sort of the range of housing styles in between a single-family detached home and mid-sized apartment buildings. So for the purposes of action one, it was duplexes and triplexes and courtyard apartments. And the recommendation or the action is to permit these unit types in one or more parcels that currently are restricted only to single-family homes unless a city can document some sort of infrastructure criteria that deems it not possible. And then action three was with regards to accessory dwelling units. And this is to permit both accessory, attached and detached accessory dwelling units or ADUs across the city of Pasco. We currently allow attached dwelling units on our parcel. So this is focused primarily on detached along with specific design standards. Some, a few policy references. Obviously, City of Pasco Goals has significant statements about addressing the housing challenges here in the city of Pasco, along with our comprehensive plan, which was adopted a couple of months ago, with a brand-new housing element that did update quite a few of our housing policies, goals, and objectives. It's often overlooked, but the 2020-2024 Tri-Cities Consolidated Plan, that's a partnership, a home program that the city of Pasco is a partner agency with the city of Kennewick and the city of Richland. And they had identified strategies to increase housing affordability options for residents. Franklin Countywide Planning Policies obviously has a statement about meeting our growth mandates and obviously the Washington State Growth Management, which the city of Pasco is a planning under. So when we're looking at how to accommodate housing or where to begin, there are sort of four main areas we'd like to look at, their kind of standard. And that is what's our current housing supply and what are their characteristics? What are the housing needs of residents today and what might they be in the future? What are our current policies that encourage or exclude housing, barriers or incentives? And then at the end of it is, can we actually meet or accommodate all of the growth that we're expecting here at the city of Pasco? So a few statistics, this is from the 2019 American Community Survey estimates. About twenty, almost twenty-two thousand total occupied housing units. Almost seventy percent, just under seventy percent are homeowner occupied. Total housing units, you can see the spread as it's been built over the decades. Significant portion, I think over thirty percent, were built between 2000 and 2009. And then we had a drastic decrease over the last decade or so, over the last decade. And then you can see the variety of housing types based on the census, how they classify building or housing types. Again, significant portion, I think seventy-one percent of our housing stock, occupied housing stock, is single-family detached units, which is one of the higher rates across the region, certainly amongst the higher populated cities in the state of Washington. And essentially what that graph shows is there's not a lot of diversity in our occupied housing units. Median income in the city of Pasco, this is the 2020 decennial census number, so it's new for us. It's just over sixty thousand dollars. And on the right, you can see the rapidly escalating home value index. And this is from Zillow. And I know that's just one, one source for this, but I know that when we presented on this project in May or June of this past year, that number in 2021 at the time was about three twenty. So we needed to update that to three fifty-nine, which is what Zillow currently has us at. But I also wanted to mention that Realtor.com had the September 2021 end date for the city of Pasco at three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And Caldwell Banker had the currently-for-sale price of all homes for sale in the city of Pasco at four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Our median rent in the city of Pasco has increased by over thirty-two percent in the last year to just over one thousand twenty-eight dollars for a one-bedroom. That's fourteen ninety-nine for a two-bedroom. There's twenty-two available units today at the city of Pasco for rentals. Cost-burdened households. So this is defined by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. That is when a household expands or is thirty percent or more of its household income on household-related costs. So basically, your home or your rental. And you can see that on the left, we have split out the senior households. And we've also got that for the entire households here at the city of Pasco. For the senior households, there was a slight increase for the homeowner cost burden from sixteen point four to seventeen point one percent from 2014 to 2019. It was significantly higher, over at ten percent, I think twelve percent, for renter households for our seniors, from forty-two percent cost burden to over fifty-four percent between 24 and 2019. And on all households, so that's everybody, there was a decrease for the homeowner cost burdened households from twenty-three percent to seventeen percent. But an increase in renter cost burden household for the city of Pasco from forty-three to almost fifty percent. So as I mentioned in that prior slide, what are our policies look at? This is a very, very summarized version of that. And you can see our zone, our land use distribution for the city of Pasco. So approximately eighty-four percent of our land use is designated with low density, fourteen percent for medium, and two percent for high density. And on the right, you can see the dwelling unit distribution. So our policy and what that, what the result is for the city of Pasco. That yellow is our single-family detached housing. The green is attached, so that would be that duplex or triplexes. And then you can see a little bit of orange, which is our, you know, courtyard apartments or fourplexes, fiveplexes and apartment buildings. You can see that there's not much of the green or orange. And I think a big part of that would be that eighty-four percent of our land use is low density, eighty-four percent of our land use does not permit anything other than a single-family detached home. So a density gap analysis was performed right after the comprehensive plan was adopted and also in preparation of this effort, along with our housing action plan effort, which is getting underway. So we've split up our land uses, low, low-density, medium, high, and mixed residential commercial. But I'd like to focus on the low-density, medium, and high here. And so our low-density land use, for instance, has a range in the comprehensive plan from two units to five units an acre. So on the low end, we could get two units an acre and a high end up to five units an acre. And what you can see on that low-density side there is that we've, we're kind of hitting that mid-range of that low-density threshold. So the low density is roughly around twenty thousand would be the medium. We're just, we're right about seventeen and a half or so. So we're almost there, certainly lower than what we could permit at the highest levels. At the medium density, we're not hitting, you can see that we're just under five thousand units, I'm sorry, five thousand would be the, our current housing stock for medium-density land use units. But we could get up to twenty-five thousand or just under twenty-five thousand. Now, that's theoretical, so you're not, you've got to account for right-of-way, environmental, and also market conditions. So it's never an expectation that we're going to get there. But you can see that we're certainly a ways off from hitting that. And on the high-density side, it's a little difficult because we don't have essentially a cap on high density, but we do have height limits, lot standards, et cetera, that do inherently limit the amount of density you can get in any particular development. So that number's a little bit more harder to decipher. And same with the mixed residential commercial. But on our low-density and medium-density, we're not really achieving the units in the comprehensive plan that we can accommodate or that we have planned for. I know that's kind of spoke a little faster, but feel free to interrupt me and ask any So one way to accommodate all of our expected growth, and just as a reminder, we're, we need to accommodate over fifteen thousand housing units by the year 2038, so almost fifty thousand residents or forty-eight thousand residents. So missing middle housing, which is basically action one from House Bill nineteen twenty-three, it's a range of housing units with multiple units compatible in scale and form with detached single-family homes. So traditionally, that's a duplex, a triplex, could be a courtyard apartment, and even accessory dwelling units. And you can see kind of the illustrative graphic on the right, which shows kind of at least an illustrative way to depict these units. This is what they look like in real life. So on the left, you see some zero lot lines, so essentially a duplexes, a duplex development. You can see triplexes, more of the townhome style, some more duplexes on that bottom middle. And again, more duplexes on the, on the bottom right. That's actually a part of a duplex and triplex development here at the city of Pasco. The one that we don't have here is on the upper right, which is a, could be a cottage style housing or a courtyard apartment, which is essentially is units with a central open space in the middle. So the planning commission recommended back in March or April of this past year, a series of amendments for action item one. And we came to council with that initial recommendation to understand council's direction a little bit better. And so since then, we've gone back and refined our proposal, both on where these units could be permitted and also the development standards associated with them. And at that time, there was some concern and questions about utility concerns with regards to RS twenty, which is historically very low-density, and also the impact on sort of the Riverview area. So rather than permit duplexes in the RS twenty zone, staff has left that zoning district alone because while there was some comments about utilizing the special permit process to allow duplexes in the RS twenty, RS twenty zone, I think from staff's, staff's recommendation would be not to use a special permit process, but you would require a rezone. A rezone would be, have to be in conformance with our comprehensive plan. And keep in mind, rezones, while there's a public carrying by the Pasco hearing examiner, council has final authority on rezones. So if there is an applicant or a property owner in the RS twenty zone that would like to rezone to have a duplex on their lot, they would go through the hearing examiner and then to council for final action. On the RS twelve, we are recommending and planning staff, planning commission recommendation is to permit duplexes on any lot. On triplexes, we would recommend to permit them on corner lots within a quarter-mile of a public land use or facility. So that would be everything from a public transportation route to a park, a school, a hospital, or city hall for that matter. And the intent with that is to begin to spread out where more available housing options are available for our residents, rather than locating specifically along high arterial or high-traveled or high-vehicle arterials. The idea is to provide residents with options for housing closer to the kind of amenities that they would expect or like to see, such as a park or a school. We would not recommend courtyard apartments in the RS twelve zone. RS one, R one and R two, I'm sorry, RS one and R one, we would recommend duplexes and triplexes on all lots. And RS one, staff would recommend permitting corner lots on, again, with the quarter-mile of a public land use or facility, a courtyard apartment would be permitted. And then R one, that would be permitted by right. And R two through R four, they are already permitted.
Jacob, this is council member Roach, and I just have a quick question. Are senior living facilities considered high-density housing?
I don't believe they're classified as any sort of housing, depends on the development type as they come in. So they could be, but they could also be single-family. It just kind of depends on what the proposed applicant is intending to do.
Do you know, I know I'm putting you on the spot here, but do you know if they're, what zones, residential zones they are allowed in?
I'd have to check. I think if it was a duplex today, it would only be permitted in the R two, R three, or R four. If it was, basically, if it's a multifamily project, so more than three units on one lot, it, today, it'd be restricted to R through, R two through R four. So if it was attached, basically eighty-four percent of today's land use would not allow it.
I see. Thank you.
So I guess I have another question, Mr. Gonzalez. So is the idea to put in, like as we, as the developments are going in, to put in these higher-density units in a corner of these developments? Is that, is that the idea?
It could be an option. I think for this one, it gives the property owner a lot more flexibility in what they would like to do with their individual property, as long as it's in conformance with our development design standards and also with the comprehensive plan. So for instance, in the low-density land use, we have a policy that it is two to five units an acre. However, I know that in the West Pasco area, so south of one eighty-two, west of three ninety-five and bound by the Columbia River, our average residential density is two-point-two units an acre. So we're well below five units an acre. So there is room, if there is room on your lot to safely and still meet our standards, put a duplex on a lot. Or if you're in RS twelve, a triplex on a corner lot. If you can conform to the standards of the city of Pasco, you'd be permitted to do that. I think that's where this proposal may have a bigger benefit. I think it would also help as we expand well into the, you know, 2025, 2030, and 2040. I think it would be interesting to see, had we had these regulations in place for our latest, our latest boom cycle between 2000, 2009, and up to today, how different our housing options would have been had something like this or similar been in place at the time. So essentially, the idea is to spread out where housing options, the most affordable housing options are available for the city of Pasco residents, but not to stack up all of our medium and high-density on very limited arterials. There's also inherently some challenges with just putting our most affordable, affordable housing or all of our rental units on high-speed arterials. There inherently is some challenges with that, too. So we, our, our recommendation is begin to spread that out throughout the entire city in a more evenly pattern versus ending up like some jurisdictions where you have very dense, dense pockets of the city with a lot of congestion, and that's the only place where your affordable housing or rentals are available and everywhere else is left alone. The idea is to spread this out a little bit more evenly for all residents. So along with the, where the, are permitted by zoning district, there's also some changes staff's recommending based on the planning commission to the development standards. So for RS twenty and RS twelve, we have, and these are citywide. So for RS twenty and RS twelve, we have left them the same. For RS one, we have increased or recommended to increase the height limit from twenty-five feet to thirty-five feet. You'll note that the current height limit in RS- You'll note that the current height limit in RS one, R one, and R two is lower than the RS twenty and RS twelve. So, that, that might be just a simple correction that needs to be done regardless of this amendment. Um, there's also no changes to the ma- maximum lot coverages for the RS twenty through R one zones. Lot coverage is the amount of physical space the building footprint can take on a particular lot. In the R two district, again, an increase from twenty-five to thirty-five feet. Uh, the single-family max, uh, max lot coverage, we've left alone to forty percent. But we have, uh, taken advantage of another, uh, code amendment recently adopted or within the last year by the city, uh, city council, which was that in the waterfront development district, which is where, uh, in that, uh, in that code, multifamily housing or attached housing, this, the lot coverage is determined by the parking and setbacks. So, once you determine how much parking is required by your particular development and, uh, what the setbacks are, multi-side, the back, front, et cetera, then you can determine how your product can fit into a particular lot. And, and that allows a lot of flexibility because not all of our lots are squares, not all of them are rectangles. Some of them have curves and have, uh, some challenging topography. So, not all of, all portions of a lot are physically usable. So, this gives, uh, an applicant quite a bit of flexibility, but still within our, our safety parameters here at the city of Pasco. In the R three zone, uh, the, uh, uh, single-family height would be forty feet, multifamily forty-five feet. Again, no change to the locks, the lock coverage, but again, change to the multifamily lock coverage and then the same for the R four zoning district. So, these are the results from a housing choices survey that we distributed out last fall to both the Tri-City Association of Realtors and the Home Builder Association of Tri-Cities. And we had a variety of questions really to gauge, uh, what the interest or concerns were, variety of factors here at the city of Pasco with regards to housing. Fifty-seven percent had stated housing prices are forcing community members to seek housing outside of the city. Uh, the fifty percent for rentals. Ninety-five percent of their responses indicated that more housing options were needed in the city. Uh, for the particular unit types, you can see on the bottom in blue that, uh, fifty-four percent strongly agreed that the, the city, or there was support for duplexes. Twenty-two and a half percent somewhat agreed. Um, the triplexes and the fourplexes, uh, forty-three percent had strongly, uh, agreed or supported that. And then for accessory dwelling units, you can see about a third of the responses or thirty-six percent strongly supported uh, more ADU options in the city of Pasco. So, speaking of accessory dwelling units, which is action item three for House Bill nineteen twenty-three, uh, these are smaller independent dwelling units located on the same lot as a standalone home. They got a variety of names. It could be mother-in-laws, uh, pool houses, guest rooms or guest houses. Uh, they can be attached. Um, they can be, uh, basement ADU, they can be, uh, naticke ADU. If you can meet all the safety parameters, that might be difficult. They can be garage conversions. Um, and they can also be detached. Now, we allow all of the, uh, attached versions. We don't allow detached. And one of the challenges we have is although we already allow all the att- attached options, we have very, very minimal standards. So, it's hard to regulate, uh, and apply, uh, some safety considerations outside of the basic building code or safety code, um, uh, within accessory dwelling unit permits. So, this is a recommendation, or our recommendation would be to allow, uh, detached units with some, uh, additional parameters for all ADUs in the city of Pasco. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, research about, uh, ADU benefits. And while they may not be, and, and all, the entire code here today is not the only solution to housing, uh, the housing challenges, they are a big, uh, they are a big tool of the entire toolbox in order to address the housing challenges. So, uh, one of the benefits of ADUs is they allow the homeowner to expand their, their household account, uh, adding to the interior house. It, uh, provides some entry-level housing for, for, uh, for young, uh, young people. For instance, a lot of interns that come to the National Lab or the Department of Energy for three months. I've already indicated that there's less than thirty rentals available right now in the city of Pasco. So, it gives them an opportunity to call Pasco home for three months or six months. Um, and it provides basically ultimate flexibility for a homeowner to do what they would like to do with their property. Again, as long as they're still in conformance with city of Pasco standards. So, in July, the planning-
This is council member Roach. I'm just wondering about the ADUs, if there are any sort of incentives for homeowners, beyond just the, the rent that they might gain from an ADU. Uh, but from a city perspective, are there incentives that we have, uh, to encourage ADUs so that, uh, this is something that we can lean into to provide housing, uh, the variety of housing that we're looking for for people who are searching for rentals?
We, we don't currently have any incentives for accessory dwelling units, but we did build in some flexible standards, which I'll show on the next slide or two, that may, uh, increase their flexibility or, or feasibility for homeowners or, or, or property owners.
Thank you.
The problem, uh, one of the things that, that I've talked to a lot of homeowners about, yeah, when they have neighbors with ADUs, is that, you know, when they rented out, now you're gonna add another two, three cars to the, to the street, to the parking lot, you know, to their driveway. And, I mean, it goes both ways, right? We want, we wanna have more opportunity for more affordable housing. Uh, but then again, it, it really does impact people, the neighbors and, and whatnot that don't have them. So, anyway, that's, that's what makes it very difficult. I just wanted to throw out that comment, but, um, it, it's just all about balance, right? I mean, at the end of the day, but, uh, anyway, I just wanted to just make that comment so that the council can get a perspective of, yes, this is a good thing for, you know, uh, more affordable housing. But in the, on the other hand, somebody buys a, a home, their dream home, and then all of a sudden, now you have two residents and your, your neighbors that are affecting your quality of life because there's so many more cars and depending on, you know, who comes in there. So, anyway, just thought I'd make that comment. Council member Ronald?
Yeah, I think, uh, to that point, I think that may already be happening with folks who are living out of garages or, uh, you know, there's a lot of, uh, homes that, it's just, they're illegally having folks, uh, you know, stay with them or, and like, this might even create a, uh, safer situation for those folks who may have un- unknown folks renting. Now, they're in kind of a, you know, container, but I, I do, I do see that a lot, but, but I see that, you know, even with the, our current situation, I see a lot of folks who are, uh, are in that situation just kind of out of garages and stuff like that.
I have a question. Uh, on the ADUs, do you guys have any like studies or any kind of information as far as like when you allow those in areas, how do the people's home values, do they stay the same? Do they decrease? I mean, again, it could open up a venue where, you know, a lot of lower-income people, and I'm not trying to be negative, but, uh, where then everybody's home value goes down and then people start moving out because there's more people in there with cars and people that don't really care about the, the whole look of the neighborhood. Can you kind of give some insight on that?
Yeah, uh, there, there's, there is actually quite a bit of research on the impact of, uh, increased densities or multifamily in particular, uh, with regards to property values or home values. And although, uh, it, it may be the, uh, perception that it decreases home values, it's actually the opposite. Um, it's been done, studies across the country. We don't have one specifically done here. In major, uh, metropolitan cities, obviously, uh, there's a lot of studies that focus on those, uh, particular areas. There is not a lot of research for, for small and mid-sized cities. However, as our cities continue to grow and eventually end up in that bigger metropolitan market, uh, I, I would believe or tend to believe that we would fall into the same category where multifamily housing does not decrease your property values, um, in a particular neighborhood. And I think one of the benefits of, of this proposed recommendation is that it does begin to increase the safety of our, uh, we, we have written in some recommendations with regards to getting illegal or non-permitted ADUs, uh, to be legally permitted if they can comply with all of our proposed recommendations with regards to, um, aesthetics, um, heights, et cetera. Um, we, we did build in some of those into the proposed recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And then I kind of have a follow-up question. On the, I know you talked about the river view area at the beginning of your presentation. What about like the other areas that are like south of Court Street that are, have river views? Are, are all those areas still subject to having like, say, if there's an emptied lot, which there's empty lots close to my house, would they be permitted to have a, a duplex or triplex on, on land, you know, where you're actually viewing the river? You know, that more of the, the higher, uh, price lots?
Yeah, in the RS twenty zone, you would have to apply for a rezone. A rezone would go through a hearing, a public hearing at the, uh, for the hearing examiner, and then, uh, rezones, uh, required final action by council.
Okay, okay. Just thank you for the clarification.
Well, since we've got some questions, I might as well throw some in. Um, you mentioned recommendations just now, and, and I consistently hear you saying, you know, we're gonna bring this, uh, maybe you're not saying we're gonna bring this to council, but when it comes to council, can you tell me how exactly and when exactly we're gonna see this? You know, from like the, the hard perspective of, of some type of rewrite of the ordinances?
We, we had intended this presentation to be an update both on action one and, uh, and an introduction to action three, the ADUs. Uh, we would like to see, or, or we would like to understand kind of council direction before going into, we, we had draft ordinances approved or recommended by the planning commission. So, that's your formal ordinance with, uh, where asked statements, et cetera. But be- because there was, uh, quite a few comments about the action item one, we wanted to bring this back. It's been a few months and the housing crisis, I think, has only gotten a little bit more scary since that time. We wanted to bring this back to council for any additional comments, concerns, and then our intent is to come back to you with those ordinances to, to wrap up these items and not to skip ahead too far in this presentation. But the recommendations that, uh, or the final action taken by council on these items will impact our, um, a little bit of our House Bill nineteen twenty-three grant. Essentially, we, we won't receive that funding, um, but it may impact our, uh, application for the housing action plan through the Department of Commerce as well.
Okay, that'll be helpful. And, and then one other comment that I know we've had a running conversation about, and I think it's a combination of, of your department and several other compartment, departments, um, of having some specific standards. Uh, I keep hearing this from the builders that this, that the, that they'll come back and have some questions about, you know, whether it's naming a road or whether it's, it's, they feel like there's no consistency applied in the standards. And we've been asking for something like that. Uh, I mean, I, I know I've asked for a specific standard that's drafted with the building folks. I would like to see something like that brought forward if it doesn't exist yet.
Yeah, and, and I can, I can certainly address that. So, with regards to revisions or major refinements or overhauls, so to speak, uh, the housing action plan that, uh, we're in progress of, of developing, um, that, which has started, uh, a big, our intended result of that will be significant revision to the zoning code where appropriate. So, before we get into writing those revisions, uh, our consultant team is developing the engagement strategy, both for, uh, our builders, our realtors, but also our residents to get a better gauge of, of where they'd like to see us in, in terms of planning for the future, obviously under council goals and comprehensive plan policies. I think another, uh, uh, point that I'd, I'd like to refer to is that the city Pasco is, is sort of shifted in, in how we apply our existing regulations. Uh, I, I know there's been significant, uh, community input, uh, and, and concern about some of the lack of, um, sidewalk access on some of our neighborhoods, for instance, up near the junior schools. And I, I think had staff at that time understood kind of where we were headed, uh, there might be some different things on the ground than what exists today. I think staff today has a big emphasis on applying our code because the code was developed for a particular reason. Um, unfortunately, our code was not kept to date, up to date as the city grew. So, for instance, most of our zoning code was probably developed between nineteen seventy and the early nineties. And the world has changed a lot since the nineteen seventies to nineteen nineties. So, we are now, including this proposal, is an effort to begin to update our code. But these kinds of, um, refinements, although they're modest and, and beneficial for a property owner, they're, they're kind of low-hanging fruit when it comes to refining, um, our zoning code, also with, uh, identifying some incentives for, for development to occur.
I appreciate that, and maybe I, I, I probably wasn't entirely clear on that. I, but as, as I hear it, again, it's more of the actual construction standards, the building standards, not so much the zoning code that we're discussing here. Uh, that's, that's a plea that I've gotten from the building community. And, and again, it might not be geared towards you. It might be geared elsewhere. But that's, that's kind of what I'm hearing, uh, and again, is, is that, uh, there's not always a consistent application of certain standards, you know, whether it's a, certain setbacks and things like that. And I understand there are different processes to opt out. But any, anyway, that's, that's one of the things that I'm consistently hearing. So, um, I would like that explored, and again, I'm not necessarily just addressing you here at the podium. Uh, I'd like that explored, and I like, I'd like to understand that issue better. If we're missing something as far as like, hey, I wanna build this subdivision, this is the pack that I gotta complete, uh, to know that this is everything that's gotta come forward. If that doesn't exist, you know, from, from the perspective of a growing community, the way we are, we need to have that in hand. Again, I don't know if I'm just catching the wrong end of the conversation or not, but that's what I'm hearing.
And, Mr. Councilman, again, I had a quick, uh, follow-up also. Um, when you look at the different, uh, dynamics of like the Adams property or the Broadmore expansion, however you wanna word it, and I've seen ones where it shows like, you know, more high-density housing and, um, that such. Is this gonna be able to allow that? I know when you go out there and you see some housing developments that are on the outskirts of the Broadmore area, they seem to be still bigger areas where you have bigger homes, bigger yards. What, uh, is this gonna be able to change it so we actually have areas where we need the housing? Is, is that what we're doing here or?
Yeah, essentially, now the Broadmore area is going through its own specific master planning process. We, we've had, uh, I think, pretty positive, um, uh, interactions and conversations, uh, with, uh, both property owners, builder stakeholders in the Broadmore area. Uh, but, uh, this, uh, if this, uh, if a version of this is moved forward, it certainly will allow for the, the Broadmore master plan to accommodate additional housing varieties in, in the master plans that we essentially implement it. Um, but, but this also implements comprehensive plan policies, goals, council goals, policies as well.
Thank you.
So, uh, with regards to specific recommendations for ADUs, we have a, a lengthy list of proposed recommendations based on planning commission discussion. And also, you can see those items with the asterisk. Those are requirements of House Bill nineteen twenty-three. So, you can see both attached and detached are required to be permitted. Uh, we are, uh, proposing to allow both attached and detached ADUs. Uh, you'll see parking, uh, is not required. Now, one of the challenges with requiring parking for an accessible dwelling unit is that in many portions, and essentially, most lots would not be able to legally add additional driveway space. Or if they could, add additional driveway space or another curb cut, there's sort of some safety challenges with increased curb cuts. And if you begin to put overly restrictive policies on an ADU, you essentially make it not feasible. So, it becomes sort of like one of our policies where in theory, we encourage it, but in practice, it, it's rather difficult. And if ADUs are to be permitted to increase, uh, the available housing stock for either the homeowner or a property owner, et cetera, we certainly don't want to, uh, uh, add additional barriers. I'd also, um, would indicate that, um, or reference, most studies on ADUs indicate that they have less, uh, vehicles per homeowner, essentially because you're talking about a smaller unit. So, you, you're much below the average, uh, car vehicle ownership per, per dwelling. Owner occupancy requirements are, we are removing them. That's where, uh, currently, the city of Pasco requires the owner of the parent household to also, uh, basically occupy the, uh, the dwelling unit itself. Um, that kind of takes away the benefit of allowing ADUs in the first place. So, we would also recommend along with the planning commission to remove that requirement. I know short-term rentals has been an ongoing discussion, um, at the policy level. The planning commission, uh, had recommended that they would not be permitted, that there'd be a minimum, I think, of twenty-nine or thirty days applied, uh, the minimum rental for an ADU, which would fit sort of those summer intern, uh, uh, durations that folks are looking to have. But it would not allow them to be rented for the weekend. That was a concern from the planning commission with regards to community, uh, uh, community concerns about increasing, uh, noise or what have you from, from, from rentals over the weekend. Design standards, this is a short list, but, uh, the proposed recommendation that was shared at the planning commission, and we will share, uh, with council following this meeting, there was a long list of design, uh, standard recommendations of how to appropriately, uh, locate and design your ADU, along with the maximum unit size. That is also a requirement from House Bill nineteen twenty-three. Your lot essentially limits how big your ADU can be. However, uh, kind of to protect, it's, um, not somewhat, don't wanna say status, but certainly it's, it's a relationship to the parent or the primary dwelling. It would be limited to one thousand square feet or fifty-five percent of the total square footage of the primary residence, whichever is smaller. The height is again limited to the height of the primary dwelling or twenty-five feet. So, again, you're inherently limiting how big, uh, the structure could be. I think one of the big ones for us was that it would, it would allow us to, uh, develop new ADUs with updated standards, but it would allow those, uh, residents who are living in or, uh, have unpermitted ADUs on their lot to be in conformance with the new standard. Uh, many cities are developing specific design, uh, books, handbooks, toolkits for folks to help them through the ADU process. Uh, city staff would certainly recommend we do the same thing here to help our residents. Again, back to some community input, this is from the twenty twenty national survey. Uh, there was some significant, uh, support for- Uh, there was some significant, uh, support for housing incentives, uh, again, for zoning initiatives to increase supply. And, and again, another one for letting the market decide, and I think the, the results of this proposal and the recommendation would, would. Essentially accommodate all of these specifically with regards to letting the market decide and letting the private property owner. Decide what they would like to do with their property, as long as it's in conformance with the adopted comprehensive policy and, and council goals. So with that, I'll conclude this presentation and, uh, happy to answer any additional questions. Our, our intent was to take some more feedback today. And then come back to council with a, the formal recommendation with the attached ordinances.
Any other question? Go ahead, Councilmember Meloni.
Yeah, appreciated seeing, um, um, that there was a deliberation on short-term rentals, I think that that. That would be a, a, a major, um, consideration, I think that would, um, put a lot of, uh, uh, this, this, um, I guess. If we were to move forward with this, uh, you know, kind of put a question mark, is there, was there any, uh, deliberation or, or questions on how that would be enforced?
I have to defer to, to Director Rick White on that. I think usually we rely on neighbors. Uh, if they see something fishier or odd going on, usually though they're quick to give our code enforcement team a, a quick call and let them know what's going on. And then our code enforcement, uh, proceeds with their normal process.
Yeah, I figured that'd be pretty challenging to, to do, and so I, that's, that's the one piece I'm a, I'm a little, um. I'm worried it's the right word, but I do have some hesitation there.
This is Councilmember Meloni.
Yes, Councilmember Meloni.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, and, and thank you, Mr. Gonzalez for the, for the presentation. I mean, obviously, there's a lot, the lot packed into when we, when we talk about, you know, trying to in- increase affordable housing options. And I, I think, I think actually the point you ended on was, uh, is a really strong one. Um, none of these recommendations are requirements, they're all options. So, funk, at the, at the very heart of this matter is, how much do we want to let private, um. Private landowners and property owners to decide what they're gonna do with their house and with their, with their property. Um, and so, so I, I'm, I'm generally supportive of, of the, of all the measures you said. Um, I understand there could be some concerns, but again, I live in a pretty densely populated area. Um, there's, um, and, you know, the streets around me often don't have private driveways and garages at all. Um, and it's all very manageable, so, you know, I, I understand that the concerns might be a, a change in, in current lifestyle. But I just really can't imagine that we're gonna have massive swaths of ADUs popping up in existing neighborhoods. Um, that, that maybe one or two here and there, but I just don't think this is gonna end up being some sort of, um, you know, endemic thing. It'll just be one more thing that are, that as developers are developing new land, they'll have new options. As they're developing and as current homeowners might be looking for an alternative source of income and, and a way that, uh. You know, maybe, maybe it's to let their, you know, their grandmother come stay with them or something like that, and they're, as they, as they, you know, that, there's a lot of. I think there's a lot of good to this, so, um. And generally, I don't have any other questions, so I just, I just wanted to say that I, I do support both the ADUs and some of the, so I think the common sense change that we're looking to. You know, again, allow people to, to, to have more control of their private property rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Meloni. And hopefully it's, uh, with all the questions that were asked here, at least gives you a little better idea. And, uh, looking forward to see, see that come to us at a later time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. All right, uh, move along to the next item. And that would be a, uh, amending the PMC chapter ten point seventy, parking street restricts, restricted. Director Rick White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and this item involves, uh, proposed parking restrictions. Excuse me, on both Twentieth Avenue and Twelfth Avenue here in, in Pasco. Uh, on Twelfth Avenue, uh, where staff is experiencing difficulties. Uh, this is adjacent to Butterfield Water Treatment Plant between A and B streets, um. Uh, experiencing difficulties with, uh, being able to deliver supplies to the plant based on parking on Twelfth Avenue. So the restriction would apply to Twelfth Avenue between six AM and, and six PM, the normal, uh. Working day or delivery day, at least on Twelfth Avenue. On Twentieth Avenue, uh, south of A Street, uh, this is the location for, uh, the, uh. Brand-new apartment complex that's being built at the terminus of Twentieth Avenue. Uh, due to the lack of the right of way, particularly on the east side of Twentieth Avenue. And, uh, the conflicts with track, truck parking. Staff is recommending that, uh, it simply be restricted, or no parking, restricted period, south of A Street. And this, uh, recommendation was actually initiated by the owner of the apartment complex. Staff has also reached out to, uh, the electric company on the east side of Twentieth Avenue. And, uh, is, is recommending that, uh, council approve both of these, uh, restrictions.
Thank you, Director White. Any, uh, objections or questions or comments from council? If not, then, um. We, we can see that, uh, for, uh, expect to see that next week?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, next we'll move, uh, to the last item, which is vacating a portion of East Pueblo Street. Uh, Director White again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and this item refers to a petition for vacation, vac- vacating a portion of East Pueblo Street. Uh, that's east of, uh, Utah Avenue. Um, the action that will be coming to council next council meeting will be to set the public hearing date for the vacation process. Which would be the first Monday in December, but I did wanna make council aware that this item might look familiar. Uh, it, it went back and forth with council a number of times, almost exactly a year ago. Uh, one of the owners is simply not interested in, uh, uh, signing on to the vacation request. Um, I don't know that that's going to change, uh, but the, uh, application itself requires staff to proceed ahead. And we won't know the outcome of this particular property owner's disposition until we go through with the process. So the item that'll be coming to council next, or the next council meeting will be to set the hearing date. And then the hearing date will, uh, find out what the answer to that, uh, puzzle will be.
I think, thank you, Director White. Any questions or comments from, I, that does look familiar and, um. Yeah, I, I, I can see proceeding with, with the process and doing what we have to do. Anybody have any questions for Mr. White?
This is Councilmember Meloni.
Yes, Councilmember Meloni.
Yeah, thank you, Director White, um. When I'm looking at this, I just wanna understand, um. Is there a possibility of proceeding without a hundred percent buy-in from all affected properties? So as in, if this person continues to not, but everyone else over a certain percentage, does this, does the land become vacated regardless of their? Interest?
Uh, no, un- unfortunately, um, and, and we've explored, uh. Much discussion with the property owner, uh, the, the option of, um, establishing an access easement, of combining the parcels. Uh, have all been suggested, uh, but we cannot, we cannot land lock a parcel. Um, so even though if this particular landowner, uh, wanted to provide access to Pueblo Street. Or to his back lot through Pueblo Street, he would have to fully improve the street. He's simply not been interested in doing any of the options and, uh. In doing, in taking that position, staff cannot land lock his parcel.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move forward with that. All right, next we'll go into miscellaneous council discussion. Anybody have anything they would like to share in miscellaneous discussion? City manager Daisy.
Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, Mayor, this is Councilmember Roach. I just wanted to let you know that next Monday I will be absent, I will be out of town.
Okay, thank you for that. And go ahead.
Mayor, I did, was, was gonna ask Public Works Director to share some news he got today regarding, um. Uh, wastewater or excuse me, water treatment, uh, staff at the Public Works Department.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I am excited to announce that the State Department of Health. Has awarded the city of Pasco a twenty-year certificate of achievement. For outstanding performance and treatment optimization. And as a little bit of background on this, uh, the Washington State Department of Health has a treatment optimization program. And it specifically is for water treatment plants, similar to our Butterfield Plant, where we have rapid. Uh, rate in, or rapid rate filtration and a surface water source. And the concern there is that there's so much turbidity in the source water, that rapid rate infiltration. They wanna make sure we're getting all the turbidity out of the water as it, before it gets into our system. And so the department tracks the finished water turbidity and over the last twenty years. The staff has met the goal of ninety-five percent of the time achieving consistently high drinking water quality standards. And according to the Department of Health, this is a mark of a highly dedicated and skilled water plant treatment staff. And so only one, or, or excuse me, there are only ten plants in the entire state of Washington. That have received this award this year. So I just wanna extend my thanks and congratulations to our water treatment plant staff. That manages the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant. I wanted to share that with council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wardley.
So the plant manager and, and the division manager on there with Department of Health official getting their award, so.
You know, ever since I've been on council, that's thirteen years ago. There was nothing but wonderful things, uh, about the water quality i- in our city and the work that these guys have done, and I know. Uh, every, I, I think that's, that's the one award I've given out the most or, or, uh, acknowledged the most, uh, with our staff. Uh, and it's just, it's good to know that when residents and people come in to our city, that they know they're gonna be drinking some of the best water in the state. And so really appreciate your staff and, uh, and the quality work that they do for our city, so thank you very much.
I'll certainly pass that along.
Yeah, I'd like to know how much, uh, Councilman Meloni paid to have that picture in the backdrop.
I love that song.
Free advertising.
Great picture.
The other thing that I would like to bring up is, uh, we are approaching Veterans Day. Wanna thank Mr. Serrano, I know you were gonna, uh, take part in, uh, in the event they're gonna have. Uh, with the city of Pasco, and I think maybe some others are, are doing it as well. Uh, I would just like to honor all the veterans, uh, tonight. Uh, you know, I always think of, uh, Mr. Al, former council member Al Yenney. Uh, when he served us for many years and, um, just appreciate all the veterans and, and what you do for our country. And allow us to have the freedoms that we have in our country. I know my son and, uh, um, Vicky are, are gonna be singing the National Anthem at some of the elementary schools. Uh, and I know there's a lot of things going on, but today, uh, tonight, I just wanna say thank you to all those who have served our country. And, uh, and given us these freedom that, that we're able to have today. So thank you very much for that.
Just wanted to make a quick comment that, uh, on Veterans Day, just wanna also thank the parents, it's, uh. My daughter is serving in the Air Force and it's hard to see her deployed tomorrow, so she'll be going overseas and, uh. Yes, it's, uh, very difficult to see your son or daughter go off to, uh, serve the military, but especially when they're going out of the United States. So anyway, it's, uh, I have a new respect for parents of kids that, uh, are serving in the military.
Thank you, Councilmember Meloni, and thank you very much for the sacrifices. Anything else under miscellaneous? If not, then, uh, we're gonna move on to an executive session. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. Uh, tonight, we have. We'll be discussing the legal counsel, uh, about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten one I. Uh, that one will take approximately ten minutes and then we'll have another discussion on the collective bargaining units. Negotiation per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one forty-four. And, and that will take fifteen minutes, so it'll be a total of twenty-five minutes that we will, um, be in executive session. And then we'll come out, uh, together as, uh, a council and, uh, and be dismissed. And, um, you, you'll be excused to do that, uh, per, per the computer. So with that, it is nine twenty-four, and so we'll be returning at approximately nine fifty. And with that, uh, we'll be going into executive session. Thank you very much for joining us tonight and thank you for hanging in there with us. And with that, uh, we'll be going into executive session. Thank you very much for joining us tonight and thank you for hanging in there with us. And with that, uh, we'll be going into executive session. Thank you very much for joining us tonight and thank you for hanging in there with us.